You will leave a memo.
Mm-hmm. That's the screen, so that it can be online.
Just wait.
You see the vote results and hit that first. And then have them.
I know it is.
Not a surprise, though. When we look at next year's schedule, we might want to have two December meetings.
Good morning. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission for December 11th, 2019. We're meeting in the Board of Supervisors' chambers. Information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center, 5961 South Mooney Boulevard, Visalia, California. The staff will assist in answering questions. For further information about the Planning Commission, see the last page. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearing, or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who have made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this when speaking. May I have a roll call, please?
Calroy, here. Millies?
Here.
Elliott?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitnatch?
Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar is absent.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for the Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair, that is me. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If we have a lot of public commentary this morning, we'll organize it in such a manner that keeps everybody and provides everyone with adequate time. As a courtesy to those in attendance today, please turn off any electronic devices, i.e. cell phones, and also in compliance with the American Disabilities Act, if you need special assistance to participate this morning, please contact the Resource Management Agency at Moving on to item three, approval of minutes. We are approving the November 20th, 2019 minutes this morning. Do I have comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 20th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote. Get someone's second. Push the second. There we go.
Mr. Chair.
Everyone voted?
Commissioner Pearson?
Someone hasn't told. It hasn't tallied up. Seven yeses and zero nos. The approval of minutes has been approved.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask a question, please. I notice we have someone coming to film our meeting. Is this a county filming, or?
Three Rivers News.
But let's have him speak. Who's he, where's he from?
The director, I think County Council has okayed the use of the camera at this time, so we'll just move forward with that information.
So who's he with?
He's with the.
Three Rivers News.
Three Rivers News.
The Quayle Commonwealth.
What's with John?
The Quayle Commonwealth.
For the record, yes, he's with John Elliott.
That's all one and all.
Thought ABC, right?
No.
Could be, one day.
Could be.
Let's hope not.
Moving on to item four, parcel map, public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of the items requested to be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. So we're moving on to item 4A, tentative parcel map number PPM 19-026, UP Goshen, California -1 LP, categorical exemption and tentative subdivision map, PPM 19-026, to divide one plus or minus 5.22 acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel number one equals 2.11 acres, parcel number two equals 3.11 acres in the C3MU service commercial mixed-use zone. Site is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Betty Drive and the southbound State Route 99 off-ramp at Betty Drive in Goshen. Do I have a commentary or a motion to? First of all, I'm going to open this to public hearing. At this time, if any members of the public would like to come up and comment on this item, PPM 19-026, please do so. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If not, I will close the public testimony at this time and look for a motion from my fellow commissioners.
Act SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation Section 15, 315, Class 15 pertaining to minor land divisions and conditionally approved tentative parcel map, PPM 19-026, with the requirement to file a final map.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please vote. Please hit the second. Steve, thank you. The item passes, seven yeses and zero nos. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, public hearing. Item 5A, change of zone on PZC 19-012, William Hatt's. For a change of zone from A1 agricultural zone to M1 light industrial zone on a 2.88 acre parcel. Site is located approximately 650 feet north of Avenue 216 inside the Lindsay urban area boundary. And our contact this morning is Ms. April Hill. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Chairman Millies and Commissioners. The request is for a change of zone on a 2.88 acre parcel from the A1 agricultural zone to the M1 light manufacturing zone. The applicant plans to install a billboard on this site. And the parcel itself is triangular shaped and bisected by a county-maintained road into two portions, each about one acre in size. A public notice of the project was mailed to surrounding property owners within 300 feet. Notice was also published in the Sun Gazette with a 10-day public comment period. One neighboring property owner to the north phoned last Thursday concerned that potential uses allowed in the M1 and less intense commercial zones would affect his ability to farm. He sent in an email, which was just given to all the Commissioners now. The site is inside the county adopted City of Lindsay urban area boundary. The rezone project is subject to the city-county memorandum of understanding. As a non-residential project greater than two acres, the project may be required to meet city zoning code standards, particularly regarding outdoor advertising signs. The city did not respond to three consultation requests, one for the project review committee, one for the zone change initiation to the board, and the current Planning Commission review for recommendation to the board. The site is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan with a land use designation Valley Agriculture. Staff prepared a Rural Valley Lands Plan checklist to determine the agricultural viability of the site, 2.88 acres divided into two single acre properties, portions, and we concluded that the parcel would receive nine RVLP points and may be considered for non-agricultural zoning. RVLP Policy 1.4 states if the number of points accumulated is 11 or less, the parcel may be considered for non-ag zoning. The project is consistent with relevant general plan policies. It is considered categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15061B3, the common sense rule, which applies because the project does not have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and therefore is not subject to SEQA. The subject site is not located in an environmentally sensitive area and must comply with state and local regulations. The A1 zone is transitional and intended to prevent incompatible commercial and other uses from including and affecting agricultural areas. Surrounding properties are also zoned A1 and AE20, exclusive ag 20 acre minimum, and contain agriculture and scattered rural residences. There don't appear to be any other commercial agricultural uses nearby. The nearest is at Avenue 208 to the north inside Lindsay are apartments. That's still a ways away. The A1 zone does not allow billboards, but the proposed M1 zone allows billboards by right. A change to the M1 zone would also allow establishments engaged in the manufacturing, assembling, packaging, treatment, and processing of products other than those that may be obnoxious or offensive. And it also would allow commercial uses. However, the parcel is small with 2.88 acres, separated into two one-acre portions by a county road. Dimensions of the lot are about 397 feet by 280, narrowing to 255 by 144. Caltrans's ultimate right-of-way is 85 feet from the center line, which is more than the current right-of-way, which would limit buildings and other uses. That ends staff's report. Do you have any questions for me, Mr. Haas?
You basically don't have, it's not buildable except for a sign. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying 397 by 280.
By time you take the setbacks, there's no place to put a building.
That's our analysis, yes.
Thank you.
April, where is this property that's mentioned in the letter that we got, which is 120-041 in relation?
This is just immediately north.
North of the top half, which we're not looking to rezone?
Yes. Oh, no, we're rezoning these two.
Oh, rezoning the whole thing?
Right.
Okay.
That is land.
Any other questions?
Here.
If not, just a quick little question here. I'm looking here. So the portion to the north that we're looking to rezon, is that still part of parcel 41?
Yes.
So we've got a one parcel with two zonings going through them?
It's, it's would be, they're all both, both A1 now, they would be M1 in the future.
It'd be M1 in the future.
Yes.
So they're both A1 now? Okay, I've gotten this consumed because, all right, I see, you're right. I was looking at that differently. All right.
So April, these are assessors parcels, but are these each individual parcels, legal parcels?
No, one legal parcel that's divided by a county road.
Any other questions? If not, at this time, this is a public hearing, and I will open the testimony to the public for comment on this particular item. PZC 19-012, are there any members of the public who would like to come up and comment as the owner here of the parcel? Yes, no? Okay, if not, I will close the testimony to the public at this time and look for any comments and/or a motion to approve PZC 19-012.
No comments, I'll make a recommendation or a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors. Are there any comments? Can I continue? No? Okay. Recommend that the Board of Supervisors accept a categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 Code Regulations, Section 15061B, and the common sense rule and approve of zone change, PZC 19-012.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Please vote. Does the motion passes five yes to no? Thank you very much. Moving on to item 5B. Zoning variance, variance number PZV 19-023, Yesica Tortolito, I'm sorry for that pronunciation. Categorical exemption and zoning variance to allow the construction of a six-foot-tall fence on property located at 14220 Avenue 336 Visalia in the AE20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum zone. Site is located approximately 2.25 miles east of State Route 63. Our contact this morning is Mr. David Alexander. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Chairman Millies, Commissioners. I'm David Alexander, Planner 2 in the county's Project Processing Division. Before you this morning is PZV 19-023, a zone variance from the provisions of ordinance number 352, the zoning ordinance pertaining to Section 15.1, Point C, Point 2, Point M regarding fences to create a security wall higher than three and a half feet in the front yard. On a one-acre parcel in the AE20 zone, exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum requested by the applicant, Yesica Tortolito, a PRC 19-055 was approved on October 3rd, 2019 to allow the applicant to submit for this zoning variance. This is the vicinity map. The property is located at 14220 Avenue 336 in Visalia, approximately 2 and 1/4 miles east of State Route 63, APN number 051100025. These are the aerial and existing zoning maps. The site is located within the Rural Valley Lands Plan with the land use designation of Valley Agriculture. The subject site is zoned AE20 and contains one residence, two chicken coops, a domestic well, and a subject system. All surrounding properties are zoned AE20 and contain various agriculture and scattered rural residences. The subject site is located within the FEMA Flood Zone X. Construction within Zone X requires no specific flood mitigation measures. This is the site plan. Entitlement is found in Section 16 of the Tulare County Zoning Ordinance, number 352, as amended, authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of this ordinance result through strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of the provisions thereof. There are four mandatory findings for approval of a zone variance. One, that there are special circumstances applicable to the property involved, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, so that the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. Due to the location and surroundings, the property owner needs the front fence to be over three and a half feet high for security reasons for their pets and small children. The rural area of the subject site is frequented by loose dogs, coyotes, speeding cars, and speeding agricultural semi-trucks. Number two, that the granting of the variance will be subject to such conditions as will assure that the adjustment thereby authorized shall not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the property is situated. The scope of the variance is limited to the building of the front yard fence to be six-foot high. Previous variances have been approved to allow fences greater in height than three and a half feet. The neighbors immediately to the east and many other properties in the area have a front fence over three and a half feet high. Therefore, no grant of special privilege would occur. Number three, that the variance will not authorize a use or activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized by the zone regulation governing the parcel of property. The subject property located in an agricultural zone, which requires a fence to be nowhere than three and a half feet high, the applicant wishes to have the six-foot-tall front yard fence for security purposes. A zone variance may be granted in the AE20 zone by the Planning Commission. Therefore, this variance would not authorize a use or activity not otherwise allowed by the Zone District AE20. Number four, that the granting of the variance is consistent with the general plan. Resource Management Agency staff have reviewed the project site and circumstances and have determined a six-foot-tall front yard fence is a compatible use. With an approved variance, the granting of the variance is consistent with the general plan. The proposal has met these four required findings for approval of the zone variance, and staff recommends approval. A public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Exeter Sun Gazette with a 10-day public comment period. No comments were received. This ends staff report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for David?
Quick question, David. I'm looking at the letter from Tulare County Fire and just want to make sure that their requests are incorporated.
Yes, so they, their initial site plan, they changed their initial site plan to comply with the request from Fire Department.
All right, good, thank you.
If not, this is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the testimony to the public. And if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this project, PZV 19-023, are there any members? If not, I will close testimony to the public this time and look for a recommendation, a motion from my fellow Commissioners.
I move to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code of Regulations, Section 15, 305, Class 5, pertaining to minor alterations to land use limitations and conditionally approved zoning variance number PZV 19-023.
I'll second. Please vote. Motion passes, seven yes, zero no, PZV 19-023. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 5C. TSM 19-003 and PZV 19-018, Smee Homes Incorporated. The project is the Cross Creek Bend Subdivision and Forester Weber and Associates LLC representing. Number one, initial study and mitigated negative declaration, ISMND, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, MMRP, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines for tentative subdivision map, number TSM 19-003, and zone variance number PZV 19-018. And number two, tentative subdivision map with exceptions to divide assessors parcel map, APN 073-060-032, a 69.13 acre parcel into 402 lots, 399 single-family residential lots with two commercial lots and one plus or minus .73 acre ponding basin. In the C2MU, general commercial mixed-use zone. And number three, zone variance from the provisions of Section 18-9-D- subsection 3, 4, and 5 pertaining to side yard, rear yard, and lot area. The site is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Avenue 308 and Road 63 in Goshen. And our contact this morning is Ms. Dana Metlin. Good morning, Dana.
Good morning, Chairman Millies, Commissioners. I think you just gave the whole report. So your overview is done, but it is a 402-lot subdivision. 399 of those would be developed for single-family residences. There would be two lots for future commercial development and the stormwater drainage basin. The applicant is Smee Homes, and this is located in Goshen at the southwest corner of the intersection of Avenue 308 and Road 64. And this is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed according to the law, published in the Foothill Sun Gazette on October 25, 2019, and all property owners within 300 feet were notified by mail. And there have been no comments received regarding this project. The environmental summary is an environmental assessment. Initial study identified potentially significant effects on the environment and a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program were prepared, indicating that although the project may have a significant effect on the environment, mitigation measures were incorporated into the project that would reduce any impact to a point where clearly no significant effect on the environment could occur. And there is no substantial evidence that the project as revised would have a significant effect on the environment. The MND was sent to the State Clearing House for a 30-day public review period on October 25, ending November 25, 2019. Pursuant to Section 7-01-1745A, the subdivision ordinance, if a proposed subdivision is located entirely within an urban development boundary, the Planning Commission shall approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove the tentative map. The project is located within the urban development boundary of Goshen and the urban area boundary of Visalia. The land use designation is community commercial, mixed-use. City of Visalia was notified regarding this project, and there has been no response. The project's 399 single-family dwelling units will provide approximately 16% of the projected housing need for the community of Goshen by 2040. And these single-family dwelling units will provide approximately 6% of the projected housing need for the county of Tulare by 2040. The project is consistent with these applicable Tulare County general plan policies. This is the zoning map. The site is Zone C2MU, which is general commercial mixed-use. The surrounding properties are zoned, C2MU and AE40, which is an agricultural zone, and they contain agriculture to the west and scattered rural residences, north and south. And to the east is Caltrans Ponding Basin. Mixed-use overlay zone allows a mix of uses promoted to promote flexibility in the types of entitlements that can be issued, thereby encouraging economic development in a wide that can be issued, thereby encouraging economic development in a wide variety of applications. And the mixed-use overlay zone takes precedence over the underlying C2 zone. The request includes a zone variance, and the variance is from Section 18.9, the mixed-use overlay zone pertaining to the minimum square foot for a lot being 10,000 square feet. The minimum, well, the minimum side yard is actually zero, and the rear yard is zero if they do not have contact with a residential zone. So since this is all C2, the zone variance is really only applicable to the size of the lots, but in the mixed-use zone, they also don't have a front yard requirement either. There are mandatory findings for a zone variance, and in all the instances listed here, which I'm not going to go over, all of these findings have been met with regard to the mandatory There are exceptions that were requested from the subdivision ordinance, from Section 701-1350 pertaining to lot size being a minimum 6,000 square feet for interior lots and 7,000 square feet for corner lots, from Section 701-1355A pertaining to lot widths being a minimum of 60 feet for interior lots and 70 feet for corner lots, from Section 701-1355B pertaining to lot depths being a minimum 100 feet, and from Section 701-1225 pertaining to right-of-way widths being a minimum 60 feet. All of these exceptions are appropriate because they would enable the developer to maximize the use of the property and provide affordable housing to this disadvantaged community. In all instances, the mandatory findings for approval of exceptions to the subdivision ordinance have been met. This is the vicinity map. As mentioned, it's in Goshen, on the west side of the 99. This is the aerial photograph. And these two portions here on the east side, this was one huge parcel, but it was bisected by the creation or the completion of the new alignment of Road 64, and these two lots on the east side would be future commercial development. This is the tentative map. As mentioned, 399 residential lots comprise a major portion of the subdivision, which will be built in four phases, with each phase being timed with market demand and infrastructure improvements. Phase one would be 90 lots, phase two, 128 lots, phase three, 94 lots, phase four, 87 lots. And again, the two on the eastern side would be reserved for future development. Two points of access will be from Avenue 308, and one access point will be from Road 64. These two roads will meet the minimum 60 feet right-of-way requirement. Wastewater will be provided by the Goshen Community Services District, and water service will be provided by Cal Water. And that concludes staff's report, and these are staff's recommendations and three motions to adopt the MND and the MMRP, conditionally approve the tentative subdivision map, TSM-19-003, and conditionally approve zone variance number PZV-19-018.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With this many lots, you know, I'm going to assume that it would be 400 new residents plus kids. What, is the school the only place you can go as a kid to play? Because there's no park or anything in here, correct?
There is no park planned in this subdivision, that's correct.
So, you think, is, do you know if the school is acceptable to kids playing on their playground after school? I mean, there's no place for kids to go here. That's a problem.
Through the chair, in previous discussions with the school districts, there is usually, and that's why we look at the road, it's connected to Harvest down south. Originally, it was a little bit more mid-block, so there is that connectivity with the school, so that is, that is possible.
Okay, thank you.
So there is a pedestrian bridge?
On the other side of the freeway.
Where the children actually come from the east side as well, which should play on the playground at the school.
Is this the same vicinity that we have a CSAT project going at this time?
No, it's farther east.
It's farther east.
So we got, we got two subdivisions. We don't really have a lot in the rest of the county. They're all right here in Goshen. So, it seems that we ought to put some kind of open space in here for the people so they don't have to travel out on the road. I think Bill's got a good point there. Is there a way to add that in here and make this a, I mean, I understand the density. We're trying to keep the cost down, but we need some open space in there.
Well, again, through the chair, one of our toughest things the county deals with is the ability to provide maintenance for the parks, and we don't really have mechanisms in place at this time for necessary landscaping and lighting districts. The detention basin sizing really makes it not functional as a multi-use facility because of the depth. So, we did consider that as staff. We don't think it's appropriate necessarily for this subdivision to have the responsibilities for the parks, but the next subdivisions that do come in will definitely consider that. So if it's the planning commission's will, then I think that would be a more appropriate gesture at that time. Self-help, and that's CSAT, but self-help does have their open space that they did create as part of their project, but that was also part of the funding for that project, so they had to do it. So, I mean, it's a little bit, little bit different, but again, it's a maintenance issue for the county. We have enough trouble.
Well, it doesn't have to be county, though. Can't it be like a homeowner or association?
Not a homeowner or association. I don't think that the maintenance of, that, the fees, again, with this county, to make these projects affordable, that to actually put HOA or MELLOW these, I mean, Kingsburg was the first project we ever put a CFD on to MELLOW, and that's, that's, that's the easier one, but if I put that same project in early mart, I don't know if, if that's going to dissuade people from buying the house. So it's a little bit different functionally to try to put this on the owner. Self-help, it was a little bit easier because that's all grant-funded, and that's all bond-funded, tax increment-funded. This is out of their own pocket, so to maximize this developer, and he is the largest developer in Tulare County at this time, would be, the county does not believe that would be the right direction to go in.
It helps fulfill our affordable housing, too.
Yeah, I mean, as Dana stated, this is 6% of our RENA number, and we have 90% to go. So, this is an opportunity to catch up, and it's just fortunate enough that this planning commission, Board of Supervisors, approved this zoning on this property, and they want to take advantage of it, because we're not, not getting a whole lot of highway commercial interest clamoring for these properties right now. But if we have a developer who's interested in developing single-family homes at this location, it does work, and there is that connection to the school through Harvest.
Do we have water, water-powered sewer in the place? It's all there.
And that's, as Mr. Elliott had indicated, why Goshen? Because they do have sewer, and because they do have water. And unfortunately, in most of our other communities, we don't, don't have that, so that's why SME's chosen to operate mostly out of Goshen and the county.
So, Aaron, at this time, we wouldn't, we wouldn't entertain pocket parks because of the county not being able to maintain? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I don't see any interest from the Department or General Services in maintaining another park.
We didn't ask SME builders to do anything with it?
We did have discussions about that as far as using the facility, but they're not in a position to fund that, and neither is our General Services, so.
Aaron, I mean, to follow up on my colleague's question about the parks, and I'm glad you used the phrase pocket park, because I was about to say that, so I know it's real now. Just what happened in Dinuba was they left land vacant for a while and then got state grants and different things to fund the park. Has that been considered here? Is leaving the land vacant, not turning it into a park until it's ready?
Again, most cities have landscaping districts and park districts that get assessment fees to pay for those park districts. We do not have that in this county, so even to, it's, all of our parks that we've built over the last 10 years have been totally grant-funded, and, you know, from a general services perspective, it's, they really can't afford to provide services to another park, you know? Mooney Grove is tough enough, you know, to keep adding parks. We need to build homes. We just don't have the funds to provide for the parks yet, so landscaping and lighting districts, homeowner associations, really don't work to fund that if that's a cost differentiator for a home buyer who's trying to buy an affordable house.
It's like with SME builders, they should build that into the project and just pass that along to the price of the house. I mean, that's how we've always done it in the past, in privately-developed housing tracks.
Again, we don't, we don't have a lot of parks in any of our existing subdivisions.
I know, and we should.
They're all outside, they're all county parks, so again, it's not, not something we've entertained previously.
Yeah, so the state doesn't have funding, I know the state's putting the pressure on all of the municipalities and regions to come up with housing to meet this large number of houses that we don't have. Seems like they would put forth some funding on this to help that, but that's a lot of homes for no parks, but.
Yeah, well, it's four phases, too.
I know, it's four phases. But in any event, I would just say they ought to do everything they can. I'm talking about the builder to see if they can work something out.
Can we make a recommendation that they consider that in one of the later phases?
You could.
Well, I think, though, there's a real problem in affordable housing, because the Wall Street Journal pointed out today that the, you know, the Freddie Mac, or Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, the people who insure these loans so that people can get into them for a very low down payment, are making it harder all of a sudden to qualify. And so, these houses, these, I suspect these people can't afford any more than what they're charging for the house. And so, you know, I think as a commission, we need to make sure that it's affordable, secondly, and then the other thing is, I'm very familiar with most of Goshen, the school is very close. You know, where I grew up as a kid, we went to the school, and it's, you know, it's a great place for kids to do after-school things, so.
Yeah, but schools have their own set of issues now, and a lot of them have to, you know, they have to secure their properties. There's hardly a single campus in Tulare County that's open after school anymore. I mean, we're lucky in three areas, we still have that, but that could change in the future, too. We can't depend on the schools for, you know, open space in these, and I realize we're trying to get our quota of housing. What's the size of these homes planned to be? Do we know?
Well, we'll ask the builder when they come up.
Yeah, when we open the, we could have more dialogue with the developer on this issue, but again, it's, staff has thought about this. Staff has considered ramifications of not building a park here, and the location of the school does help. But again, it's the requirement to impose upon this project without a real mechanism or funding source behind it, and knowing that HOAs are not necessarily a common thing in Goshen, there's really no, we could force something that is almost impossible to maintain over time. It's a good idea. We'd like to do it, but the maintenance is the real issue, and that's the same for all of our parks in the county. So, to impose something on a project that holds it up in any way, shape, or form because of something that's not maintainable doesn't make a lot of sense.
There is other vacant land contiguous.
Where's your dog in here, is what I want to know.
On your neighbor's lawn.
That's what, that's what streets are for. That's what your.
Okay, you better put up those stands with the little doggy bags in.
Again, we'll talk to the developer about this, but.
All right, let's, let's move on. Any other comments? All right, this is a public hearing at this time. I'm going to open the hearing to the public for testimony on this particular item, TSM-19-003, PZV-19-018. Are there any members of the public that would like to step up? State your name and address. I know this gentleman. Make a comment or comments.
Good morning, Chairman Will Millies, and members of the.
Morning, Randy.
Randy Forrester, Forrester Weber and Associates, project engineer, 1620 West Monroe King, Visalia. First of all, I would like to thank the staff for all the work that they have put into this study and this report. I know it's been time-consuming. We've had a lot of conversations and meetings to come up with this, and we do appreciate the county's help on that. We are providing the Goshen Community Services District with a new outfall line to their pump station, and there's quite a bit of expense that's involved in providing that 15-inch line to get to the sewer. That will be adequate to handle the outflow. We're also providing California Water Service Company with a new well site, and as my understanding, we'll probably be providing the well to Cal Water for improved circulation. Cal Water has a 12-inch main that runs down 308. In the matter of the parks, I can see that the additional cost to a homeowner for an association, for a maintenance association, would not be in their best interest. The other thing I can see about a park, pocket park or otherwise, not only being a maintenance problem, but also be a policing problem. So, again, the conditions as stated are acceptable to us. If there is a question for SME home builders, there is a representative here from them, so thank you, and we look forward to your consent.
Don't go, Randy. Don't go. I don't think, anything I've ever developed, I've had communications with the school district about using their playgrounds as part of our developments, but has SME had any conversations, do you know, with this Goshen school there as to utilize their playground areas during certain hours?
I don't believe, Mr. Will, that we had any response from the school district.
No.
Okay, but, okay, thank you.
Is there a representative from SME builders here? Would you like to come up?
No.
State your name and address, please. Good morning.
Ken Turner, 4524 West Larkport, Visalia.
What are the square footages of the models? How many elevations are there?
We don't have our plans finalized yet, but I would say 1,200 to 1,600 square feet.
1,600. Single-story, two-story, mixed?
Single-story, two-car garage.
Pardon?
Single-story, two-car garage.
All three-bedroom, two-bath?
Probably, we'll probably do mostly four-bedroom.
Okay. Be what?
Or half-four-bedroom. Four-bedroom? We developed on the other side of the highway, Cotton Tail Hollow, Phases 1, 2, and 3, and at the end, most of the families wanted four-bedrooms.
How big would the front yards be?
I believe they're 20 by 50. Well, there's a driveway, so I guess 20 by 35 or something.
I certainly understand the challenge to build a house today, and it's, the costs are just through the roof. And the problem is, is that, you know, with no open space, and you're putting four bedrooms in these places, obviously, this is for kids and families on, not necessarily the high end of the housing market. So where are these people? They're supposed to just play in the streets, and they have to have somewhere to go. I can't see doing this many units without some open space. And I know there's a maintenance problem in that, but if you don't have a place for people to go, you think you have a policing problem with no park or with a park, you're going to have a lot worse of a problem without one. So I just, to me, I can't see, and I understand we have pressure, we need to make the housing quota for the state, but we have to have some open space where people can walk and go, at least a path through the whole thing or something. It's just to stick people out there, where are they supposed to go? I don't, I don't understand this.
My only response would be referring back to Aaron's comment about maintaining the parks. I know for an HOA was brought up. I know that HOA, I don't know what the cost would be to maintain a park or establish a park or many parks, but I do know the payments we plan to have for these houses are extremely low, and it would be a significant, significant percentage of their payment would be an HOA due if we established that to pay for a park. And we're talking about 10, maybe 20. And we're talking about 10, maybe 20% of their payment would go to the HOA.
I think that's an amenity for people to move in there.
To the chair, we're already going to charge probably about $100 to $200 assessment per year on the road maintenance, so if you start tacking on another $100, it's 300. And again, this is, we're talking, trying to put four-bedroom houses out there, that's a little bit more cost to actually get to that capacity. So, I mean, kind of the best we could do is look at that, but honestly, to actually try to impose that on any developer, when we, this is kind of the first project through on this side of the freeway, and so, I mean, to impose it on this developer would be not very helpful to this project, but maybe future developers in the area might have a higher-end home that could afford those amenities.
In Goshen?
The houses, when we finished on the other side of the highway a couple of years ago, the houses are very affordable for the community, very, extremely affordable.
Subdivision.
Yeah, we totally appreciate that. We just got to have parks. I mean, whether the county provides it or the developer, somebody has to provide this.
But as for someone who develops, if you add too many things on it, we just don't do it because the profit's not there, so.
And again, applicants already agreed to pay an additional off-site roadway assessment fee that's going to add to each one of those homes because of the improvements to 64 in the future, so we've already kind of done our ask money-wise, but.
Well, what's the projected cost on, if we get this feasibility study?
Projected cost on the.
On one of these homes?
Well, again, it's probably around 300, well, $200 to $300 in assessment per, we haven't done the assessment studies yet, but it'll be $200 to $300 in road maintenance, in off-site road maintenance. So if you have, what were the homes on the other side of the freeway selling for?
It was a couple of years ago since we sold one over there, we finished up Cotton Tail Three, probably at least two years ago. They go for, I would say, low 200s to mid 200s probably for the four-bedroom, but we also get funding, federal funding, to help the homeowners pay for them, that most of the homeowners qualify for. So homeowners are going to be looking at very low payments, like I said, if they get additional assessment, it's going to, it's really going to affect them, it's going to be a significant part of their payment.
So if you have a $2,000 tax and then add $300 on it, it might be a difference, so.
You know, I just, it's hard for me to get my head around where these kids are going to go. With a five-foot side setback on the sidewalk yards, that means your neighbor's house is 10 feet away.
Well, and that's the trade-off the state's really making with the new building codes that are going to require everything, you know, higher title 24 compliance and everything else as far as energy efficiency, so the home values are, the cost to the developer's going to go up dramatically. So the only connection point here is with the school and what the school can provide, and there is good connectivity with the school. Like I said, the only last aspect of this is the drainage basin, and the depth of the drainage basin makes it a definite deterrent, but outside of that, if you look at the drainage basin, how do you utilize that for a walking area? So, if the developer would be amenable to making it accessible as a walking area, that still has to be maintained by the, basically by the, the assessment fees are going to maintain for that, the maintenance of that. It's a strip of a detention basin, so.
The new building code kicks in January 1st, and it's going to require solar and, like Aaron said, a bunch of top 24 requirements, so the cost of construction in about three weeks is going to go up significantly. Every house has to have solar, not, it used to be a stubout for solar, and solar was optional, but solar is required for every home in California starting January 1st.
Well, then maybe the federal or the state part of this can contribute to some of the open space, and we're not, I don't think we're looking at this right.
Again, we did look at this. So again, even if General Services was to take over this park because they're going to pay an assessment fee for us to maintain it, just for the detention basin, to cut down the weeds, and you could drive through many of our communities and look at those detention basins, to cut down the weeds on this one, to actually go out and get a grant, I don't think the General Services would be interested in doing that, but then to maintain it on top of that, that's, you know, that's either coming out of the cost of the general fund, there's no mechanism to pay for that.
Right, but we're going to subsidize the people buying the house so the developer can get the money. That's fine, let's just subsidize a little more and put some open space in it.
Again, there's no real, let's subsidize through the general fund.
Well, not the general fund, but they're getting federal funds so the people can afford the house.
For the house.
Right. So if you put that into the cost of the house, you can have some open space and make a real quality development. I don't, I don't see what we're doing here, we're cutting.
I don't think it works that way.
And it doesn't work that way.
Well, it's, okay, well, you do get federal money instead of the payment from the actual homeowner.
We, the homeowner gets a grant, is, and that's not automatic, that's just a mechanism that homeowners were using to buy houses in Goshen at the end of the last project we did in Goshen.
Goes to the homeowner, not the builder.
Right.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get anything from it.
But the homeowner's.
Subsidizes their payments.
Yeah, the homeowner's on the hook to pay the house payment.
Right.
I think I understand the need for affordable housing and all that because we've got to get people, you know, stay away from the streets kind of thing, you don't want a lower-income family to have to live on the street or in a park that we might be providing from some other development. But what I would definitely like to see, let's say this goes ahead like this or not, depends on my colleagues, I'm looking at all this space around that development, I really would like the county to plan something in there for open space so that we don't, you know, turn it into New York, where it's high rises and high density just to have high density. So this is more, you know, less to SME right now, but more to county staff.
Single-family.
I would, I need to have, I need to have or would like to see open space in there, you know, at least around this at some point.
And like I said, it's duly noted, we did have this conversation, we think there's other interests out there, and again, if it was a higher-end home that could, you could actually do an HOA fee for the maintenance of a park, which is unusual, then that would be applicable. But given the nature of this project and at this time, it just doesn't work out feasibly, and, but it is duly noted that a park is in the interest of the planning commission to put in this area, and again, the future developers as they move forward will be looking at having to do that, so, but just not in this case.
Well, I think if we're going to do something in the future in the, on the perimeter, I'm all for that, because I'm just looking at this as a major problem with all of these homes, there's a lot of homes, that's great, but as everyone has said, where do the, where do the young folks go? We're asking for trouble here in creating a ghetto, and I don't want that either, so, you know, someplace down the line here, we need to address the park situation.
Well, and again.
Not today, but we ought to do that.
And again, you have to also look at the cost outlay they're going to have to put for well, for, I mean, to get all the infrastructure to this project is huge, SME's not necessarily used to having all the infrastructure in front of it.
Maybe the county builds a park, I mean, there's lots of creative ways to do things, and if the county wants to add on to the house count, then maybe they need to consider some park space in here as well, they have to foot the bill for it. Board of Supervisors may have to come up with some funding for this at some point in time.
Let's get a grant, Aaron, for a park.
And like I said, we've gotten grants in the past, and Prop 68's available, but the multi-use thing with the school is kind of the flavor more so recently, but yes, like I said, the school has, is great proximity to this project, but yes, the staff would definitely look into that.
Can we add a recommendation on to this if we approve it to the Board of Supervisors that they have a, take a look at providing some supplemental park areas around this project?
Well, yeah, that could be a recommendation to staff to look into providing park and recreational uses in this area.
That sounds reasonable.
You go down Harvest, and that's the back of the school, and that's a huge play area, so.
Right.
People might be concerned about liabilities and all that, though.
Right, so I mean, again, we've looked at other schools recently, Ivanhoe, et cetera, and what it would take to create, build parks there, and it's a cost, you know, so, I mean, there is that, but again, staff would be happy to look into grant funding opportunities for parks and.
Any other comments for the gentleman? No, thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public? Mr. Washington?
I know I'm not a member of the general public, but I just wanted to chime in a little bit. I'm actually meeting with the superintendent of schools this afternoon, or tomorrow afternoon. We've discussed this project, I'm going to be updating her about this project, they're very excited about the project. One of the things that they've talked about in the past is how they utilize their play area, their playground, their playfield for the community. The bus drivers will drive, because of the freeway between, kind of splitting the community there, bus drivers will drive the kids home from the school back onto the eastern side of the freeway, and as they're getting back on to go back to the, continue their route, they see the kids run back across the pedestrian thing and go back to school and play on the playground, and the school is open for that. We've had discussions with the school district for projects in Ivanhoe as well as we would look at Goshen to partner with them as far as if we're successful in getting a grant for an additional park that they might be able to provide the maintenance for it, that's one of the challenges, that is the biggest challenge of ongoing maintenance. I'd also like to mention that there is a new park in Goshen that the county took on, the drainage basin on the south side of Betty Riggin, just passed, it's on the opposite side of the freeway, but it's a large rec field that the county just took that on, we've been paying the maintenance on that, and just, that is just weeding and mowing is about $40,000 a year, and if you were to put that on these houses, that is another big cost. We really have a state mandate for affordable housing, it might not be preferred housing that some of the people in this room would like to live in themselves, but we have to provide for all facets of our society. Affordable housing is a big challenge. The solar mandate now, it's been estimated that adds about anywhere from $75 to $100 more a month on a house payment because of the added cost of building that, so there's added costs of all these requirements that, quite frankly, takes something that could be affordable to make it not affordable. So that's the challenge that we all have, because we have mandates coming down from the state. As far as the federal subsidies, what you were saying, that is a homeowner assistance project or a program, it's not a subsidy to the developer, it's helping affordability for owners that are purchasing on their first time or an affordable attainment for them to assist in the purchase of that. As far as on the east side, again, the self-help projects that are moving forward, which are great, that is grant-funded through lots of projects, this is a free-market project on the west side that we're looking at, which I was really excited about as we did our housing element, the previous housing element, that we were able to say to the state that the free market is able to provide affordable housing in Goshen based on the SME project. We brought forward that because it's truly an affordable project, and that's what we need, is we need some affordability in our housing. So, I know everybody likes the parks, and as this goes forward, there is other interest out there, there's added costs to this project because of extending the major infrastructure out there, they're the first in on that side, so as that builds out, we'll look at that. But we will continue to look at the partnership opportunities with the school district. Oh, and one last thing on the Harvest, Harvest is, is a direct route, there will be a stop, there's a stoplight and a crosswalk there directly down Harvest, and next August, we're completely rebuilding Harvest and putting new sidewalks in and everything, so, and the school's also excited about that. So, there's progress there, there's accessibility at the school for rec, and face a big challenge for affordable housing in this county.
One of the things I've seen in North County, and you guys who are in real estate will maybe have a different, a more detailed perspective, but when one development goes in, then others want to start going.
Absolutely.
So, that's my hope here, that if we approve this, that we're going to have developments that can support or subsidize or whatever you want to call it, the parks, infrastructure that we're all asking for.
Right, and just to clarify again, they are adding the water and the sewer to this area that is not there right now, so they're already carrying a big burden for future development in that area.
This is a plus for Goshen, so.
Any other comments? Any other comments from the members of the public at this time? If not, I will close the testimony by the public and look for a recommendation, a motion from my fellow commissioners.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
There are three motions.
First motion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration and the mega, gee, mitigation monitoring reporting program consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guidelines for tentative subdivision map number TCSM 19-003, zone variation PZV 19-018, and that's the first motion.
Do we have a second?
Make your motion, push.
I'll second that motion.
Please vote. The motion passes five yes to no. Moving on to the second condition, do I have a motion?
Okay, I'll make it again, I'll make a motion to approve a conditional approved tentative subdivision map number TCM 19-003 with exceptions to divide one 6.913 acre parcel into 402 lots, 399 single-family residential lots, two commercial lots, and 1.73 acre ponty basin in the C2MU general commercial mixed-use zone.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Maybe somebody else can do the next one, I'm out of air.
The condition is approved, five yes to no. Moving on to the third condition.
Chairman Millies had a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, do we add that on this one, or where do we add that?
You could.
Well, can you repeat what it was?
Well, I would just recommend, the planning commission's recommending to the Board of Supervisors that they investigate possible land on the periphery of this project for future parks.
Area parks, okay, area parks?
Area park.
Community park.
Community park.
Community park.
Yeah, neighborhood park.
So how do we add that?
Community park. So the, the planning commission has recommended to the Board of Supervisors that the staff look into adding a community park on the periphery of this project.
As stated. Do I have, do I have a motion?
Do we have to read?
With, pardon?
We have to read that?
Yeah.
Fourth one out?
Yeah, you have to read the third one.
Okay, so as stated by staff, and I make a motion that we conditionally approve zone variance number PZV 19-018 from the provisions of section 18.9. D., paragraphs three, four, and five pertaining to side yard setback, rear yard setback, and lot area in the C2MU general commercial mixed-use zone.
Do we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Please vote.
Somebody else second it.
Is approved, five yes to no, and that concludes the voting on all three of these motions. Let's take a break.
Thank you.
For, take a break till 10:15. Be seated, we are reconvening the Tulare County Planning Commission for December 11th, 2019 at this time. Your conversations at another time. We're moving on to item 5D. We're moving on to item five D, special use permit number PSP nineteen dash zero one nine, Redwood Ranch, Michael Camarosi. Camarosi, I apologize for that. Categorical exemption and conditional use permit of special use permit number nineteen dash zero one nine for a guest ranch and assemblages of people on two-point-five-plus acres of a one-hundred-and-ninety-plus-or-minus acre property located in the AF Foothill Agricultural Zone. The site is located on the South Fork Drive, approximately eight miles outside Three Rivers, and our contact this morning is Ms. April Hill. Good morning again, April.
Good morning, Chairman Millies and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner Three in Nick County's Economic Development and Planning Branch, Project Processing Division. Redwood Ranch requests approval of a special use permit PSP nineteen zero one nine for assemblages of people for up to twelve events per year within associated guest ranch. The Redwood Ranch activities are, will take place on approximately two-point-five acres of a one-hundred-and-ninety-acre property located at four-eight-eight-zero-eight South Fork Drive, approximately eight miles east of Three Rivers, in the AF Foothill Agricultural Zone and outside the Three Rivers Urban Development Boundary. The is mostly scrubland, and the activities are centered towards, centered to south of the, of South Fork Drive. The application for PSP nineteen nineteen was submitted in response to a code compliance violation for assemblages of people without an approved use permit. The county is bringing this use into compliance through the use permit, conditions of approval. County Building Enforcement and Planning Staff have monitored this violation and checked with the Sheriff and Fire Department Staff for any findings or reports by these agencies of threats to the health and safety of surrounding properties. None were reported. Recently, in October, the applicant was issued a temporary use permit for four events, and could not find any corroborating evidence to justify issuing further violation notices. The project description has been clarified by staff questions and applicant revisions. The application was put in several months ago, and we have been clarifying that through the months. A request for a zone variance for more than twelve annual events has been withdrawn. A public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners within three-hundred feet and commenters who provided their mailing addresses. This notice was also published in the Sun Gazette with a ten-day public comment period. Sun Gazette is the newspaper of general circulation that is closest to Three Rivers and regularly publishes local events. Numerous comments were received before the planning commission was released for today's public hearing. Several were received on Friday, Monday, Tuesday, and this morning. Comments that were received this morning during the public hearing will be shared with the Commissioners at later date. Staff recently received a December second letter from a law firm, Amy Minter, representing some of those in opposition to the project. Staff finds that the letter does not address the proposed use permit, only the previous violation. The letter incorrectly states the wrong categorical exemption. There is no new construction proposed. It also makes claims of general plan inconsistencies, all of which are addressed in the resolution and staff report. Here's the vicinity map, showing the location of the site. PSP nineteen nineteen isn't allowed use consistent with the applicable elements of the County General Plan, Foothill Agricultural Designation under the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and the Zoning Ordinance Agricultural Foothill Zoning District. County's Uniform Rules for Agricultural Preserve also allow assemblages of people and guest ranches with a conditionally approved special use permit. Staff, in order to address some of the neighbors concerned, has included non-standard design element conditions for county planning commission review, including advanced outdoor fire requirements, lighting standards consistent with the two thousand eighteen Three Rivers Community Plan update, and things like bear-proof solid waste containers. The applicant and their counsel regre to limit the events consistent with PSP nineteen nineteen and its section one-five-three-zero-one class one categorical exemption. The subject parcel lies on the south side of county-maintained South Fork Drive, which is a typical mountainous road with varying widths and surface types. If you went all the way to the end of South Fork Drive, there's a campground inside the Coya Kings Canyon National Park. County Roads Department has no plans for major improvements on South Fork Drive. The guest ranch and assemblages of people may generate up to two-hundred-and-two daily trips, arrivals and departures, with about seven peak AM hour trips and eight peak PM hour trips. Those peak hour trips are below the hundred, the hundred peak hour trip threshold under the general plan. Then those estimates are based on the applicant's estimates, also by Institute of Transportation Engineers two thousand eight Trip Generation Manual, and by county planning staff. Most of the trips take place on weekends before ten AM and after ten PM, and those are not considered peak traffic hours. The applicant and conditions of approval require a shuttle service for more than thirty guests to reduce the traffic on South Fork Drive. The applicants also have agreements with specific local businesses to allow guests to use their parking areas before boarding shuttles to go to events at the, at the site. The South Fork of the Coya River flows through the parcel about twelve-hundred feet south of South Fork Drive. All of the structures are more than a hundred feet from the perennial river, as required by Foothill Growth Management Plan Development Standards. One exception is the caretaker's residence that was built in about nineteen seventy-five, before the FGMP and AF zoning were applied. As described by the applicant, most of the parcel is inaccessible scrubland, scrubland, that is mancina and other shrubs. The California Natural Diversity Database of March two thousand nineteen shows four species of concern in the area. That map is at the back of your packet, towards the back of your packet. The Southern Sierra Nevada Fisher, the Coya Brodea Flower, the Coya Monkey Flower, and Berry's Morning Glory. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife website stated that there were no habitat conservation plans specifically for fishers. We did receive a comment letter on Monday from Three Rivers residents who learned that the state had purchased ninety-eight acres in nineteen eighty-five on the north side of South Fork Drive, and established a Coya Brodea Ecological Preserve. However, the wildflowers' presence on the preserve does not mean that it is present on the subject site. The assemblages and guest ranch are limited to about two-and-a-half acres of the one-hundred-and-ninety-acre parcel. The subject site is located outside any urban boundaries, is subject to the Foothill Growth Management Plan with a land use designation of foothill agriculture. Foothill, the FGMP and the general plan allow a guest ranch or summer camp and an assemblage of people for educational and entertainment purposes with a conditionally approved special use permit. The project is consistent with relevant policies and development standards of the FGMP and of the Tulare County General Plan. Specific policies that support the project are Economic Development Policy Number ED five four, which states that county shall support the development of visitor-serving attractions, ED five point five, which states that the county shall encourage the development of recreational activities along the Coya River, and ED five point seven, which states that the county shall encourage additional recreational and visitor-serving development in areas such as Three Rivers. Environmental Resources Management Element Policy ERM five point nine states that the county should encourage private interests to establish new commercial recreation opportunities, such as destination resorts and recreational camps. Foothill Growth Management Policy one point seven states that commercial recreation uses shall have access from the high state highway. However, exceptions are provided for travel-oriented tourist commercial uses for retreat-related developments per land use policy LU four point four. Conditions of approval include development standards from the FGMP, including a hundred-foot setback standards for perennial waterways, in the spirit of the FGMP to relieve the project of anyone unduly applying these standards incorrectly. The subject site is zone AF Foothill Agriculture, and once again, assemblages of people for educational and entertainment purposes and guest ranches are allowed in all agricultural zones with an approved special use permit. Conditions of approval require compliance with the assemblages of people ordinance number thirty-four sixteen, their development standards, and the development standards. Assemblages are defined as a temporary gathering together of any number of persons at any location at any single time when rent or compensation of any form is paid for the use of the venue for educational, entertainment, or commercial purposes. In the AF zone and other agricultural zones, assemblages may include, but will and shall not be limited to, agritourism, company retreats and picnics, special events, or celebrations such as weddings and reunions. In no case shall auto shows, boat shows, or art shows be allowed in the agricultural zones, and none are proposed. A guest ranch or a summer camp is defined in Zoning Ordinance Section Two as buildings and premises offering recreational activities for such pursuits as horseback riding, swimming, and hiking with living and dining accommodations. No horseback riding is proposed. This topographical map shows the entire one-hundred-and-ninety-acre parcel with structures and the event site in the northern portion. The site contains five water storage tanks, two fire hydrants, and at least twenty-four fire extinguishers throughout the ranch. Conditions of approval reflect Fire Department requirements in the draft short-term rental ordinance. The California Historical Resource Information System records dated July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, stated that there have been no previous cultural resource studies conducted within the project area, and there are no recorded cultural resources. The CRIS recommended that a field survey be conducted by a qualified professional consultant for ground-disturbing activities. The Native American Heritage Commission was contacted for a sacred lands file search with negative results. If significant cultural resources are found, local tribes will be consulted, but it is not necessary for a categorically exempt project. The subject site contains a two thousand one eighty-four square-foot barn that was legally converted to a residence, and is being used as verification rentals, three, three hundred sixty-eight square-foot cabins, and two single-family residences. The applicant stated that the two residences are reserved for the property owner and the vacation care, and the ranch caretaker, and that the three cabins are reserved for members of the owner's family. The site also includes a domestic hard rock water well, five water storage tanks for fire suppression, as noted earlier, two fire hydrants, plus a laundry room, a shop building, a storage shop building, a storage shed, hay storage barn, fencing, two septic leachline systems, two propane tanks, and parking areas for thirty-five vehicles. However, that number of vehicles, the parking can be expanded if valet, parking valets are hired. Redwood Ranch has six guest rooms and one residence, the barn house, and will allow up to one hundred overnight guests, twenty inside the barn house, and eighty, only eighty campers. That's by condition of approval. Additional guests of the renter are allowed to camp in tents on the property, however, the property is not a public campground. Portable toilets are required for more than twenty-five overnight guests or for assemblage attendees. These photos from Redwood Ranch's web site show the entrance and graded driveway to the buildings, the river, an event set up in front of the barn house in daytime, and a different event scene at night. Commenters have provided many photos in the packages that were posted online and passed out today. Photos from the agent show the county fire department inspected fire pit in the center of a gravel area. Due to the site's location in the state responsibility area, open wood-fueled fires are permitted only in months with low fire risks. That's November, December, January, and February, or during the CAL FIRE declared fire season, whichever is longer. That's a condition of approval. The county fire department advised Redwood Ranch on fire safety and emergency evacuation plans, went to the site, inspected the site, gave their advice, and the applicant has adopted an emergency evacuation plan. Again, site contains fire water storage, five water storage tanks, two fire hydrants, at least twenty-four fire extinguishers throughout the ranch. Conditions of approval reflect the requirements in the draft, draft short-term rental ordinance that were recommended by the fire department. This ends staff's report. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for April?
You know, the entrance doesn't look like it's paved, but it's clearly on your map shows it's paved. Is that, is that just a gravel area going in, but then it's paved once you get the other side? That top photo on the left?
It is graded and has recently been upgraded with asphalt, as I understand.
Okay, so that's an old picture?
Yes. We can get more details from the applicant and agent.
And in, in the short-term ordinance, didn't we require screens on outdoor fires?
Well, yeah, but this isn't necessarily applying to that.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
You mentioned, April, that we're already agreeable to twelve events per year. Are we already down that in the conditions? Is that in the conditions for approval?
Yes, through the chair, we were going to stick to the standard requirements for the assemblages ordinance for this project at this time.
And does that include, you know, shutting off the amplification at ten o'clock?
Standard conditions from the assemblages of people ordinance, yes.
So, April, this package was handed out to us?
Yes.
It has a lot of photos in it?
Yes.
This from an attorney, is that right?
No, the first, first few pages are from Mr. Velvasencio, and other letters received Monday, Tuesday, and this morning.
And whose photos are these that are in this package?
Ms. Seligman can attribute, can, Ms. Seligman, who provided the photos, can tell us where the, so tell us the source.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing, and I will open the hearing to the public for testimony. Yes, sir, you have a comment?
Yes, Chairman, I would suggest that you limit it to three minutes, that each comment to, limit each comment to three minutes, given the amount of people.
Yeah, I was going to make that comment. You beat me to the punch. So, we're going to open this to the public for testimony. Each member of the public that does come up must state your name and address. We'll have a tightly controlled three minutes. If you have a prepared statement that you've written, unfortunately, we can't listen to ten or fifteen pages, so you can certainly turn that in to Velma, and staff will include that as part of the input that you provide. So, we may have to cut you off at, so to speak, at a point in time if it gets too lengthy. So, how many folks out in the public would like to speak this morning? Could I see a show of hands?
Can we hear from the applicant first?
Yeah, we will. All right, and is the applicant here?
Yes.
There he is, okay. So, let's start off with you, sir. State your name and address.
Thank you very much. My name's Eric George. I'm here with my brother Andrew George. Our address is four-eight-zero-zero-eight South Fork Drive.
Where?
South Fork Drive in Three Rivers.
Okay.
Is this the address of the property?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Your first name was Eric?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eric, E-R-I-C.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start with something that was said by yourself. In the prior hearing, you stated, "Where do the young people go?" And I submit that what we're doing is at least a partial answer to that. And I submit that what we're doing is at least a partial answer to that. In 2014, my brother Andrew and I saw the property we now call Redwood Ranch. It was love at first sight. It was not our first time in Three Rivers. Since the very early 1970s, when our parents bought a one-quarter interest in a property, we've been here about once a month. I know the area really well. I love the area. I've backpacked throughout the national park my whole life. I've swum in every fork of the river. Every chance I get to learn about the history of Tulare County, I do. And I've read our fantastic newspaper every single week. Sadly, now online. So it's been quite the experience to find ourselves accused of degrading the moral character of Three Rivers. Yes, that's a direct quote. You will not hear one word of negativity from me about anybody who's opposing this. I just want to say the following, and I really want to be mindful of the three-minute rule. If I go on too long, give me the high sign, please, and I'll sit down. When we bought Redwood Ranch, it was beyond overwhelming. Loads of litter, fences that led nowhere, pipes in the river, a mucky coi pond that had been recently installed, even chains on trees. You should see it now. It is really stunning. Why buy the ranch? We did it as a place for our family and our closest friends and loved ones to have a sanctuary away from the very cities that there's now some accusation we're trying to emulate.
And you purchased about three years ago?
We purchased, it was exactly in 2014. Most recently, we've done something we really didn't have an intention to do. We've shared the ranch. We've shared it with responsible individuals, and it has been a real joy. That has evolved in sorts. First, I thought it would be a good way to bring in some revenue to offset the cost of having a caretaker there, and it has been. I want to be clear, there has not been a penny of profit, ever. This is called the labor of love. And every dime of revenue that's come in has gone right back into the ranch. But the point I really want to convey to you is that it's become so much more than that. I've come to realize there are many, many people in this day and age who are thirsting for something more, who want, somehow yearn for a connection to the natural outdoors and for natural beauty, and I've learned this from reviews. Now, most of the people who have stayed at Redwood Ranch are Tulare County residents. Reviews, this may sound corny, they are extraordinary. It's a deeply touching, important thing for a lot of people. "This is the best place I've ever been. This is the best event I've ever had. I can't tell you how meaningful this was to me," on and on and on. It's a really good thing. I'm struck by this. There's no glitz. There's nothing fancy. This is just a plain, beautiful, natural setting. We have built nothing new for purposes of having folks come. We will build nothing new for purposes of having folks come, which is why I love hearing that we're accused of being a, quote-unquote, "development." So I just want to be clear, and then I probably have gone past my three minutes. I'm close, I see. This is not about creating a tourist destination. This is about being super responsible, not changing one iota of the character of Three Rivers. This is about being really responsible in having one to two acres, I heard 2.5, that may be more accurate, of the entirety of the 190-acre property that we have. That's about 1%, maybe a little bit more than 1% of the property. And we want to do this on an infrequent basis, as the commissioners have heard, 12 times a year, on average, once a month. So I've got more to say.
Oh, you can come back if we need to do that. We'll figure that out.
I appreciate that.
Where is your permanent residence?
In Los Angeles.
So that's where you reside?
That's where I reside. I'm here, on average, once every three weeks.
All right.
Where in Los Angeles?
In Beverly Hills.
All right.
Do we get to ask questions?
Sure, certainly.
Okay, so I'm looking at, and I haven't gone all the way through it, this packet that was submitted to us that was mentioned just a bit ago. And I'm looking at one of the events called the Cali Rally. And the pricing on there is in euros.
In euros, did you say?
Euros.
Okay, and I have to apologize, I've not seen this filing yet. If this is the one that was submitted this morning, I haven't seen it. But I'm happy to field any, oh, thank you so much.
So my question is, given that you're agreeing, per what we've heard, to, I don't want to say dial it down, but to limit, to go down from 30 events to 12, how and where do you intend to market this?
It's a great question.
Yeah.
And all I can say is that, first of all, I have not seen this page. I'm referring to one that says, "The Cali Rally Practical, That's All Pricing."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me, could you state your name and address?
I can. I'm Eric's brother. My name is Andrew George. And this Cali Rally was a trip organized by some folks in Belgium, where they visited all of the national parks in California.
Okay.
And they started in Yosemite, then went to Sequoia, and it was a one-night event where they passed through our ranch and then moved on.
And I want to emphasize in response to the question that it may be that we have much more limited marketing, or even no marketing, but 12 a year is not something that would justify a significant expenditure for marketing.
And I just want to answer to that question. They found us through VRBO and Airbnb. Those are the two sites that we market through, which is primarily short-term rental.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're going to have probably a line set up here, so everyone that would like to come up and comment, why don't we form a line back here by the gentleman that's leaning against the wall? Are you going to be coming up? All right. So again, how many folks are coming up? Okay, I guess, four and again, how many are coming up opposed to this? How many support it? All right, so let's get the supporters in. Let's just start a line here. I don't want to discriminate. All right, just to the back of the chamber, just so we have people ready to come up, and we're not waiting for people to walk up, let's just be ready to come up and start your three minutes. Please state your name and address. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Alan Landon. I live at 19501 Avenue 364 outside Wood Lake. My wife and I have, my wife and I are both retired teachers, and we have a catering business where we go places and we make pizzas. And we have a wood-fired oven on a trailer. And beginning last year, we were hired by some of the participants at the events there. And we had two events last year, calendar year, and this current calendar year, we were up there eight times. And bringing our pizzas to those people, and the people are experienced. I know that the residents who live there 24/7 through 65, they have a lot more experience than we do. But our experience has always been very pleasant. The people are always really, really nice. And they're always, the ones we have met have been from out of the area, the Bay Area, Southern California. And one of the first questions we always ask them is, "How did you find out about this place?" And they said, "Oh, we go online, and we see amazing pictures, and they always come up and visit before their event occurs." And then they end up finding out that we're available and that we can be hired by them for events. Since the people are coming from out of the area, we do events for them that are, people are arriving on like Thursday or Friday, we'll be up there to make pizzas for them, or wedding rehearsal before the event, or actually for the wedding. Or sometimes, we've even had ones where we were there on a Sunday or Monday, where the people wrapping up and ready to head home. The people are always very, very nice. We were kind of surprised at that road. It's very, initially it was kind of creepy. But we've been up there so many times now that it's quite manageable for us, and we enjoy it. And we were really pleased to see that the people that are coming from out of the area, they're staying in the hotels and stuff. A lot of them are staying in the hotels down in Three Rivers and riding up and down in the van. And that's, it just seems really, really safe and a nice way to do it. The owner's management of the place has always been very, very nice for us and supportive. And it seems that, you know, they're supporting our business, they're supporting the hotels, the van shuttles, and things like that. Let me see.
About 30 seconds.
I think I've covered all the things. We're very supportive of this event. We've been to lots of other locations. Our business is really amazing because every event we go to is unique. The people are different, the locations are different. We go all over the county.
Could you state the name of your business again?
All Fired Up Pizza.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, All Fired Up Pizza.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Who's up next? Don't be shy. All right. Please state your name and address. Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see you again. Mike Canarosi, 42265 North Fork Drive, Three Rivers. And I just wanted to say that this reminds me an awful lot of what Three Rivers experienced. You'll remember about 2001, when it was discovered that the Lions Club had been operating for years without all the proper paperwork. So in the pursuit of their special use permit, there was an organized group of mostly neighbors around the area that had some concerns, very similar. It was too noisy. There was too much traffic, some issues with public safety. And really made things difficult for the Lions Club to continue. But everything came to the table. The, I think it was called the Planning Commission at the time. Well, we listened to the concerns of both the Lions Club and the adjacent property owners, and came up with a solution. The concerns, some of the concerns are valid, and they were addressed. And the Lions Club made some concessions. And I would hope that the Planning Commission today adopts a policy that is consistent with what we've done in the past here. Because most of the complaints on any particular project are typically voiced by those that are most immediately affected. But the Planning Commission looks at the whole county and the town in general, so... That's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
Do you just want supporters first?
Pardon?
Do you just want to hear from supporters first?
No, either one, no.
Okay.
Either one.
My name is Carol Clum. I live at 45638 South Fork Drive, Three Rivers, approximately two and a half miles below Redwood Ranch. I am opposed to the special use permit. My concerns are road safety and increased wildfire risk posed by the Redwood Ranch events, which are attended by up to 300 people. Traffic on South Fork Drive increases significantly on the weekends that Redwood Ranch hosts events. Starting on Fridays, we see party details vans, florists, food and photographer trucks, shuttle vans, and lots of private cars. Once South Fork Drive passes the grouse valley turnoff, it becomes one lane with little or no shoulders. The road is steep, narrow, twisting, and has blind curves. There are few places on the way to Redwood Ranch where a car can pull over to allow a large truck to pass. Pedestrians, joggers, and bicyclists have to pay sharp attention to coming traffic. I walk on this road, on that stretch. There are no places to escape a speeding car but the narrow gutter on one side or down the steep bank on the other. Alcohol is consumed at some of Redwood Ranch parties. Driving inebriated on that road at night is dangerous. Redwood Ranch is in a very high wildfire-risk area. In the event of a wildfire, there's only one way out, downhill, while fire trucks will be driving uphill. In the past, party goers at Redwood Ranch have had large fires in a fire pit at a time of the year when Cal Fire has prohibited outdoor burning. At night, the wind blows down South Fork Canyon toward Highway 198. The canyon at Redwood Ranch is narrow and steep, causing wind speed to increase. Any airborne embers from the fire pit or gigantic barbecue grill will blow down canyon toward the residents below. How many people here are opposed to the special use permit? Raise your hand.
Through the chair. Can you get a dress to the chair?
Excuse me?
You have to. Get a dress to the chair.
Please.
I can only address him? Really?
You've been here before. It's good to see you again.
I did, yeah. I see you guys are still hanging around, huh?
Thank you very much.
My name is Dean Harbald, and I live at 49032 South Fork Drive. This is about approximately a mile and a half to the, up further than the Redwood Ranch. In the past two years, the road has definitely deteriorated quite a bit up to that point because of the activities that go on at Redwood Ranch. The Redwood Ranch advertises that they are able to park 50 cars. Today, they said 35 on their land. The frequency of the use of this road, along with the already deteriorating road conditions, prohibit adequate response time for emergency vehicles and is one of the reasons why, within the Foothill Growth Management Plan, it states, under the heading of the corridor area, "The first level involves the designation of lands that are potentially suitable for development." Next, "These areas are the disputed-as-developed corridors. Including of property in a development corridor is generally dependent upon the meeting of all the following requirements." One of those conditions, under Number Two, states that the development must meet the requirement for a 15-minute response time for emergencies. I would also like to refer to the Tulare County General Plan of the Objective 7.1 of Goal 7. Adequate emergency access. Ensure adequate access for the emergency and safety vehicles consistent with the State Response and Standard Foothill Growth Management Plan Development Standards, Tulare County Improvement Standard. The road on Upper South Fork clearly does not meet the requirements for adequate emergency response time according to both the Foothill Growth Management Plan and the General Plan. Therefore, those items, the health and safety of any guest attending a wedding or any other commercial event at the Redwood Ranch, is for this reason alone
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes are up. Can you wrap it up, please?
...that a specific application should be denied.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
I'm Cheryl Harbald. I'm at 49032 South Fork Drive. About 15 years ago, a Southern California city lost 336 homes to a wildfire. It was started by a pyromaniac who lit a candle out in a field, and by the time the candle had burned down, the wind picked up the flame, and the pyromaniac made his getaway. He was never caught. About a month ago, when it was hot and dry and windy, my husband and I were driving up the Upper South Fork Drive Road when something caught my eye. He stopped the car, and I got out and walked over to a gently sloping rock. It was about two feet high. There, on top of the rock, were seven votive candles arranged in a There, on top of the rock, were seven votive candles arranged in a circle about twelve inches apart in diameter. They'd burned down, but they were out. One had been turned over, possibly by the wind. The wax had run down the rock, and this location was about a quarter a mile down beyond Redwood Ranch. This is a sort of foolishness that leads to wildfires. We have lived over forty years in this canyon. So far, we've been lucky. But more people in this canyon equals an increased risk of fire. I know you're probably sick of hearing us harp on this subject, but the danger is real and we are the ones who live there. There's the baggie with the seven votive candles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning, please state your name and address.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is George Waller. I live at four three eight five seven South Fork.
Ma'am, could you pull the microphone just down a little bit? Thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
In Three Rivers. I, along with everyone I know on South Fork, am opposed to this categorical exemption and SUP conditional approval for many reasons, most of which have been cited and documented in the hundreds of pages of attachments to this agenda item. Redwood Ranch is only about eight miles up from the state highway one ninety-eight, but it's at least a twenty to twenty-five minute drive each way. It is beyond the Three Rivers development boundary. It is beyond the South Fork development corridor. It's in the Foothill Agriculture Zone, regulated by the Foothill Growth Management Plan, which purports to protect its waters, its woodlands, its wildlife, and special status species, and its way of life, extensive agriculture, primarily grazing on natural landscapes with a minimum parcel size of a hundred sixty acres and few dwelling units allowed. Those of us who crave a rural, uncrowded, peaceful home site where cattle and wildlife still roam, streams and rivers still flow, oak woodlands still grow, and the loudest sound is often the river's rushing, rely on the FGMP to protect and preserve this vital environment. The whole county benefits too, when these essential watersheds, woodlands, and habitats are maintained, bringing clean surface water, recharging groundwater, cleaning and cooling the air, building and holding soil, reducing flooding, providing beauty and opportunities for recreation, wildlife viewing, solitude, and wonder. The FGMP applies to all lands designated foothill agriculture, except for those in the community plan areas. The FGMP objectives are to rationally direct growth into specific areas of the foothills in order to protect the fragile environment and preserve important agricultural land and accommodate urban rural growth in the areas serviceable by the state and/or county agencies in a manner which is cost efficient, safe, and consistent with environmental concerns. While the county shall encourage additional recreational and visitor-serving developments in the foothills in areas such as Three Rivers, development will be avoided in naturally and culturally sensitive areas wherever possible. Lands potentially suitable for development are designated as development corridors. Redwood Ranch is beyond the South Fork Development Corridor, in the Foothill Agriculture Zone, where for many reasons, its type of commercial development should not occur. People live on South Fork because they're fine with wildlife and cattle.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Your three minutes are up.
We will thank you for not approving this exemption and not approving or conditionally approving a special use permit.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Greg Schwalr, four three eight five seven South Fork Drive, Three Rivers, about five miles below the ranch in question. Please do not approve the categorical exemption and do not conditionally approve the special use permit. The Foothill's Growth Management Plan in the foothill areas where development may not occur due to access constraints, emergency response time, slope, and other factors that prohibit safe development designated foothill agriculture, Redwood Ranch is in this zone. It's the intent of the FGMP to ensure these properties be maintained in agricultural operations and open space uses. In this zone, the county shall discourage the location of a development and improvements in close proximity to water course areas, the South Fork in question, and riparian habitat and prevent encroachment into them. According to the plan, it shall encourage concentration of development along major travel routes to allow for future public transportation services and minimize travel distances to frequently used facilities. It shall discourage the scattering of development throughout the foothills to reduce vehicular emissions. It shall ensure that development is located in areas that can adequately be served by existing Tulare County Fire Station's Sheriff's Department. While the FGMP shall recognize existing non-agricultural uses outside development corridors, the county shall ensure, assure the existing values and identity of unincorporated areas in the foothills are properly addressed. Allowing the Redwood Ranch Three Rivers LLC to proceed, proceed as a commercial venue for a dozen events per year involving up to hundreds of people per event, when they operated illegally for years to the detriment of their neighbors' peaceful enjoyment of their own property, and then did not disclose the full nature of their ongoing business and plans, sets a terrible precedent and violates the spirit and the intent of the FGMP on which the residents, the other residents of South Fork have relied to their detriment. Already, we are experiencing cumulative impacts from Redwood Ranch's illegal development as Sunshine Ranch, Sunshine Paradise Ranch also is operating a couple of miles beyond Redwood Ranch without a special use permit. Property is available in Three Rivers on the state highway for infill commercial development where necessary facilities and services are already in existence. There's no need to push against the AF zoning for these unnecessary developments that are negatively impacting our quality of life of the, and the other neighbors' great potential to negatively impact the environment.
Thank you, sir. I think your three minutes are up. If you'd like to submit more, if you have more, you're certainly welcome to give it to our staff. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
My name is George Loeb, four five seven nine three Cinnamon Canyon Road, Three Rivers, California. It's unreasonable to believe the Tulare County County will monitor Redwood Ranch to ensure compliance with the special use permit. Three Rivers is drastically understaffed by county law enforcement standards. We have one resident deputy sheriff for two thousand residents. Weekend evening events are when our local sheriff's deputy is off duty, so any off-hour response normally comes from vicilia, a one-hour minimum in driving time. Since these are considered public nuisance calls, they are low priority, and response times are rarely taken over to three to four to five hours. If calls are received after eleven PM curfew, there wouldn't be a deputy on scene until at least one, twelve AM or later. Thus, the SUP reporting that the forty-six incident reports by neighbors, pages four sixty-one to five oh seven, were found not to be credible by the sheriff's department, can be explained by the response time of the sheriff's department itself. Despite the collection of substantial evidence by attorney Dennis Villa-Vincenzo and local neighbors directly impacted by Redwood Ranch, the RMA has failed to enforce violations for three years. This has resulted in direct health and safety impacts to neighbors, which has created an antagonistic and partisan environment, a rural community once dependent on healthy neighborhood relations. The RMA has looked the other way for three years, completely neglecting its response to enforce violations while citing a quote "temporary hold on enforcement," unquote. When questioned where this hold on enforcement policy could be located in the statutory code, we're informed by Michael Grove in an email dated nine ten nineteen that this action is quote "internal policy based on direction of the ward of supervisors." The special use permit hearing was postponed several times by the RMA to allow Redwood Ranch to fulfill bookings for this calendar year, and it has continued to add bookings for next year as well, so they are assuming the county will continue this policy. This policy encourages non-compliance because it is easier and seemingly assured to succeed if you ask for forgiveness rather than doing, going through the legally required steps of obtaining an SUP in the first place. Therefore, the integrity of the process and the trustworthiness of the RMA has been severely compromised by this policy. Secondly, I have problems with the fire department's evacuation plan. Essentially, if you look in the, in the document, there is no evacuation plan for two hundred and fifty people. The fire department wants, wants the guests to muster in the parking lot, count heads, and wait until contacted by first responders. What's wrong with this scenario? First, there may be no way to contact the ranches. There is no cell service and landlines may be down in, in a fire. Second, the wildfires, people often perish from smoke inhalation or asphyxiation, not just incineration. For example, what happens to, when a group of up to two hundred and fifty people, thirty to fifty cars in the parking lot, when they begin to smell smoke, and they've maybe had a little bit to drink? Do they stay in place or do something, or do something or panic and get in their vehicles and start down the single lane of Upper South Fork Drive? What happens when they meet emergency vehicles on their way up, blocking both ingress and egress? Who's going to back up? Is there sufficient room for such a line of vehicles?
Sir, your time has expired to three minutes. If you'd like to submit the remainder of your text to the staff, please.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have we forgotten paradise? There's one way in and one way out in this canyon.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Hacker, and I live at four six seven two six South Fork Drive in Three Rivers. Our ranch joins Redwood Ranch on their western boundary. I do not like doing this and talking against a neighbor. What I am doing is talking and opposing what neighbors are trying to do to their ranch. Our ranch is zoned agriculture, and our land is in the Williamson Act, and we have no intention of asking for anything different. Redwood Ranch is zoned agriculture, and what they're asking has no connection to agriculture and therefore should not be permitted or allowed. The owners knew full well what they bought in the zoning when they purchased the property. When we, my wife and family, looked for properties to purchase fifteen years ago, we specifically looked for the zoning we have. We wanted livestock, we wanted fruit trees, we wanted to be able to enjoy the scenery, the mountains, the river, the wildlife, and the privacy and the community. Neighbors walk South Fork, they ride their bicycles, on South Fork, walk their dogs. We stop and talk to each other along the road. The properties in, properties in the area of Redwood Ranch are not commercial properties. They are steep, rugged, and many driveways lead down to the river. The roads are not designed for vehicles to meet. They are narrow and have many blind curves. The ever-present fire danger, fire danger surrounds the area. We have concerns about environmental issues where crowds are gathered. You may not know, but trash and recycling pickups and mail deliveries do not go up to the Redwood Ranch because of the narrow roads and curves, blind curves. Finally, a stretch of the road before the entrance of the Red, Redwood Ranch is open range, meaning cattle do not have to be fenced off of the road. A guest ranch is going to do nothing to improve the quality of life for the ones of us that live along the South Fork. Tulare County Fire, law enforcement, environmental agencies can dress, can address their issues much better than I can. I urge you not to approve this permit. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Barbara Brightolph. I live at three five four eight nine Ward Avenue in Springville. I'm here on behalf of the Alta Peak CNPS Chapter, the local chapter for California Native Plant Society. I have a PhD in biology, twenty years of experience in fieldwork. I'm the president and the conservation chair of the local chapter, and I'm not being paid to be here today. I'm on my own dime. My comments are going to focus on the sensitivity of the land, and I want to emphasize the fact that I do not believe that a category, a categorical exemption is warranted in this case. The application asks for a class one exemption, yes, class one guideline, because there's no new development, no new building proposed, right? But the class one exemption also says that there will be negligible or no expansion of use. A key consideration is whether the project involves negligible or no expansion of an existing use. A project with significant cumulative impacts or otherwise has a reasonable possibility of resulting in a significant effect does not qualify for a class one exemption. So even if no new building is proposed, it could possibly be ineligible for a class one exemption, okay, categorical exemption. The application is asking for permission to have eighty campers on the land with no limitation. So anybody who rents that house or anybody who takes the ranch for a special event could have eighty campers per night on that land. The plot, the site plan gives no indication of where those campers will be or where they're, yeah, what they're going to be doing. If you allowed eighty campers per night for three hundred sixty-five days a year, that would come to more than twenty-nine thousand camper nights. Now, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but that gives you an idea of the possible impact of this. Also, the fire department requires a vegetation clearance of thirty feet around all tents. If you do the math on that, that would mean about two hundred square feet per tent. And if you allow two people per tent, then that would be eight thousand square feet footprint where vegetation must be removed. Now, this is a sensitive ecological area. There's the Keweeabrodea Preserve that's right next door. There's records of Keweeabrodea upstream and downstream, and.
Could you wrap up your, your commentary?
Okay, so it's reasonable to assume that rare plants exist on this land and that that kind of disturbance would have a significant impact.
Commissioner Elliott has a question for you.
Sure.
Could you restate your name again?
Barbara Brightolph.
Okay, and also, is there, you know, like the Park Service does this with the designated area for camping? And is there a level of campers that would be some sort of compromise in your estimation?
Well.
A number.
My husband and I own a ranch in Springville that is, that has a special use permit on it. It's seven hundred twenty acres. We have about a five-acre piece that we use for special events, weddings, and we also have campers. We limit our weddings to a hundred fifty people maximum to limit the noise because we have neighbors within a quarter of a mile, I think, maybe a third of a mile of where we are. And there's twenty campers allowed on the ranch at any one time.
Thank you very much.
Sure, and I have a little.
Thank you. Uh, yes, who's up? Who's up? Good morning. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Samuel Hacker, and I live at four four two six seven two six South Fork Drive. I live in a small cabin on same property as my grandparents. And I live in a room, it's kind of like an outdoor porch, but there's a bunch of windows so I can like see outside at night, and it, and it's really beautiful. I can also hear everything, like the owls, the frogs down at the pond that's nearby. But all of that is kind of ruined when there's YMCA blaring in your ears, coming down the mount, coming down the mountain. They play their music very loud, and it is a small canyon, and so the music echoes off the sides down to all the neighbors who are trying to go to sleep. And so you have good song choice, but, um, it's, it's just not good for my sleep schedule at all to have music while trying to go to sleep. And, yeah, so that's not easy. And then I also, uh, one time, it was a little. And then I also, one time, it was a little while ago, we had, it was like, three people in one night. They took our road down to our house. They were all going to Redwood Ranch because they had lost their way, but it was three people, three separate people in one night, all going up to Redwood Ranch, so... It's kind of disturbing the neighbors and kind of keeping them up at night and destroying their evening.
Would you be okay with cutting the music off at a certain hour? Would you be okay with cutting the music off at a certain time?
Yes, I would also very much prefer that they, like, tone it down a bit because it's very, very loud.
All right, thank you very much.
Even when I'm inside the house.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming up.
Nice to see some young people commenting, and so keep it up. Don't quit.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
My name is Willa Hecker.
Want to pull that down? There you go.
My name is Willa Hecker. I live at four six seven two six South Fork Drive. And you just heard from my brother and before him, my grandpa, yeah, my grandpa before, yeah, anyway. Like my brother said, I can hear the music. It's very, 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 very loud.
Not your style of music, right?
I can sing along if I want to.
Oh, that's Disney, yeah.
And I'm worried about the fire, and I'm worried about the animals mostly because they can hear better than me. They can hear all of that, and it's disturbing them. And it's probably disturbing the hunters most of all because the little animals can hear the music, which is making them scared, so the hunters can eat. And also the fire safety, which will... It's a very, very, very narrow road. So if you try and go down that road two cars at a time, which sometimes happens, and you meet up, then one will have to go to the side of the road and the other will pass. But it takes, like, two minutes at the most to get two cars passed at once. And imagine a bunch of cars coming down and then a fire truck coming up the road to help stop a fire. That would take a long time. And there's no way that there'd be a way to get the fire out. So, yeah, that's all that I'm worried about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name and address.
My name is Logan Robertson Hecker, and I live at four six seven two six South Fork Drive in Three Rivers. We are Redwood Ranch's most immediate downriver neighbor with a distance of approximately three-quarters of a mile between the Redwood Ranch events area and the cabin where I live with my husband and two children, whom I did not put up to coming to speak to you today. I think it's watching too many youth activists on YouTube, but they couldn't be stopped. My husband's parents, Charlie and Esther Hecker, bought our ranch in two thousand and four. Their home is just a five-minute walk from our cabin. When I stand on our back patio looking down river to the west, I can see my in-laws' house. But beyond that, the nearest neighbor, whose lights that I can see at night, is over a mile and a half away. To the north, we have a neighbor up the hill who mostly keeps to himself. And other than these small lights, the hills are dark and the night sky is uniquely brilliant. Before Redwood Ranch began hosting regular multi-day events, the only nighttime sound was the river, the frogs in our pond, and an occasional car on South Fork Drive. Places like this with dark skies and minimal human noise are becoming more and more rare all over the world. And I'm acutely aware of the unique privilege of being able to raise my children in such a place. I think it's also really important to understand the difference between intention and impact. The best of intentions can still have a negative impact, and I want you to understand the impact that Redwood Ranch's intense commercial activity is having on our lives. Keep in mind that many of these events are multi-day, multi-night events with, as my children said, music loud enough to travel the three-quarters of a mile to our cabin and beyond. Shuttles take guests to Redwood Ranch all afternoon back and forth. These are not large bus shuttles because the road couldn't take that. They're small shuttles, not much larger than a private vehicle. And those shuttles continue deep into the night delivering guests back to their lodging. We've lived with that for the past two years with over twenty multi-day events in two thousand and eighteen, even more in two thousand and nineteen. With the exception of a few events that were on a temporary use permit mentioned earlier at the end of the two thousand and nineteen season, all of these events were conducted without a permit. Like Redwood Ranch, the South Fork of the Keweeabranche through our property with over a mile of swimming holes, waterfalls, boulders, rocky overhangs. And I know that the part of the ranch, the river that goes through Redwood Ranch is lovely, but given the numerous beautiful locations just a few hundred feet down river, not to mention all the other riverfront throughout the Keweeab watershed, there's no reason that this property should be singled out for exemptions to the zoning and development boundaries outlined in the general plan, the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and the Three Rivers Community Plan. There are no unique factors related to this property as referenced in the Foothill Growth Management Plan on page three dash three. The only unique or exceptional thing about this situation is that a business has been operating for almost two full years without a permit and that the county has previously deemed this area to not be suitable for this type of development. Lastly, I just want to request that the commission make a decision on this permit today rather than referring it back to staff for further study. They have been studying it. Ms. Hill made a presentation that was very detailed. We have all been studying it all year long, and it's time for all of us to be able to move on and move forward with the next stage of this process. Thank you.
Can you live with the twelve events? Limiting it to twelve events, because I know in the past there's been more than that.
Could I live with it? Sure, I could live with it. I'm living with more of it now. I think the real question before you is, should we have to live with it? Does it fall within the planning guidelines that this commission and the Board of Supervisors have created for the county?
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
I'm Esther Hecker. I live at four six seven two six South Fork Drive, Three Rivers. I'm an owner and resident of the property adjoining Redwood Ranch. As you've heard, we live in a very high, severe fire zone with narrow, windy roads, steep drop-offs. And I strongly request that you think about the safety of people who live in the area as well as those who visit. I agree with many things that have been said here today concerning our issues. A primary concern of mine, though, is the public safety, especially emergency services. There is a fire safety plan that was presented. It is the mandatory plan that you have to have if you're going to have events. I think we need to be clear, though, that this is not a plan that overall denies or approves the safety of this project. It basically tells, it's a procedure that was set up for how to get out of the barn if there's a fire or in one of the resident houses. And, you know, how do you handle a local onsite fire within a building? How do you evacuate? That's the evacuation that I read when I read this report here. I think that's very different than when we talk about hillside wildfire up on the mountains, the grasses where it moves very, very quickly. And at that time, we could be dealing with a hundred overnight people trying to get out or two hundred and fifty during the daytime who came up in shuttles. And where are the shuttles? Do the shuttles stay all night? I don't think so. Or if they do, they have to come and go, come and go to get people out. So there is definitely a problem with how they plan to evacuate for a wildfire with that number of people, the shuttles, the winding road. The R M As suggest in their report that the fire department says to shelter in place. Where are they sheltering in place? We got a barn for twenty people. You can crowd some in, but two hundred and fifty's a lot of people to shelter in place. There is no plan for that. There also seems to me to be some inconsistencies with how the maximum occupancy was calculated on the, with the onsite fire inspector who said there could be a hundred and fifty occupancy. For one, this fire report was done, I believe, in May, and the initial report or the initial special use permit said that there would be maybe a hundred people or a hundred and fifty people, something like that, even though the websites were advertising for two hundred and fifty, three hundred, whatever. Now they are asking for fewer, but it's not in compliance with an evaluation of looking at it with two hundred and fifty people now.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Good morning. State your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Peter Clum, and I live at four five six three eight South Fork Drive, about two and a half miles below the Redwood Ranch. Initially, I'd like to respectfully request that those commissioners who are not familiar with the site drive out the road and observe the road and the surrounding terrain prior to and after the site. Mr. Canarozy talked about the lion's roping arena, but the sites from a public safety perspective are very different indeed. I ask you to place yourself in the position of those of us who live on South Fork Drive. Ask yourself, would I feel safe with the business activities described here today being conducted in an area so clearly unsuited for and for which, from a common sense, public safety perspective, creates such an obvious, unnecessary, and unacceptable wildfire, road, and traffic danger to our community? Existing physical conditions and human behavior occurring at such activities make it only a matter of time before Redwood Ranch's business activities result in a disaster. If you have any doubt, don't make a decision today. Drive out South Fork Drive. Observe the surroundings, the road, the heavily vegetated and steep terrain, especially the two miles below and above Redwood Ranch. I would ask that you vote against this special use permit after you've taken the opportunity to drive out there and conduct a site observation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name and address.
My name is Kathleen Seligman, and I live at four six one three six South Fork Drive. My objections to this project have little to do with the project itself. It really has more to do with the location. Following is one of the many arguments as to why this special use permit application should be denied. The R M A claims that the Foothill Growth Management Plan summary states that development inside and outside development corridors will be controlled on a site-specific basis. This is a demonstrably false statement, and I think light should be shed on this because the distinction is critical to understanding how the Foothill Growth Management Plan focuses development into designated areas. The summary section of the Foothill Growth Management Plan actually states, and I quote, "A complete picture of the Foothill Growth Management Plan can only be gained after thorough reading of the policies which direct and shape development inside and outside the development corridors." This statement does not imply that development is allowed outside development corridors and into areas designated as foothill agriculture on a site-specific basis. Planned community areas, master development plans, hamlet plans, commercial recreational sites are all examples of development types allowed outside of development corridors, but must be established through the same first and second level F G M P planning criteria. The summary of the F G M P concludes that the implementation measures will give the county the tools needed to guide development in a manner consistent with the F G M P. Implementation measures outlined within the nineteen eighty-one and two thousand and twelve updated Foothill Growth Management Plan, which R M A states have not been updated or changed, include the following. Level one of the Foothill Growth Management Plan concentrates rural and urban development in the development corridors only. Level one delineates these areas outside development corridors that should, through traditional zoning, be protected for intensive and extensive agricultural uses. Level three of the Foothill Growth Management Plan excludes environmentally insensitive areas from development corridors and designates them on the land use plan as open space. In conclusion, in finishing, I would like to remind the planners and the directors of the R M A to remember that our planning documents, the Three Rivers Community Plan update, the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and the Tulare County General Plan are the constitution with the county is legally mandated to follow.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good morning. Please state your name and address.
My name is Haley Thorne. I am a Three Rivers resident, four three one six eight North Keweeab River Drive. I'm born and raised in Three Rivers. My family has been there since the late eighteen hundreds, so seen some things. I've had the pleasure of working with Andrew and Eric and enjoying the ranch. My children love it there. The wildlife there is pretty special. I think an entity like this is invaluable to our community and our county alike. Half of the clients there are Tulare County residents, so locals are enjoying and utilizing this business. It's a very unique place, and it adds so much to our small community. There's no really other place that exists like this in Three Rivers alone, and I think it would be a huge disservice to not allow mindful, creative entities like this to exist. I think we should focus on building up Three Rivers, and it has so much to offer, and it shouldn't just be this small pass-through town on the way to Sequoia National Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Is it still morning?
It is. Close. Please state your name and address.
My name is Erin Leedy, L E E D Y. I'm going to take a deep breath here. I'm a little nervous to be here. It took me a...
You're good.
A while to decide. I live on South Fork, four four nine one two. I live there with my husband and three small children. So I don't really intend to speak on any issues involving CEQA or any of the, maybe, references or statements that many of my neighbors have said today. I'm here primarily because throughout the course of maybe three years, I've had the opportunity to become close friends with Eric and Andrew George. As a result, my family has spent a lot of time with them. I've met all extended family, met their grandparents and the grandkids and the nieces and nephews. So what brought me here wasn't necessarily that I wanted to speak to you about the road, and I walk on that road, too. I think it's, I find a way to park and walk on the road. But what has happened, I think, in the lead-up to this hearing is something that inspired me to come in today. I think there's a fair amount of vitriol, even sometimes rising to the level of what I feel is defamation against them as outsiders, sort of this perception that they are, they're doing harm. And that has not been my experience, has not been my impression. And I think that's relevant because if you're in a position to be making a determination about whether these people can follow the rules that you may be imposing, I think their character and their inclination matters. I find that these are people who want to do good, yes, in terms of intention, but they are reasonable. And they are people who are invested in the place, as Ms. Thorne mentioned. I'm raising young children in Three Rivers, and I care about lifting it up. I care about building it up. I care about creating those opportunities. I care about building it up, I care about creating those opportunities and having people who want to do that is meaningful to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, please state your name and address, good morning.
Good morning, my name is Dennis V. Vasencio, I'm an attorney. I'm going to ask for a couple of extra minutes if I can, Mr. Chairperson. Mr. Andrews had about six minutes.
And the reason for that?
Mr. George had about six minutes to speak and I'd like the same, if I could, please. I have a lot of issues to cover. The first thing that I want to do is I want to address something that this planning commission has not been told by RMA.
You're the attorney for who?
For the Cuyahoga Coalition.
And who is that?
In Three Rivers, it's an organization in Three Rivers.
Oh, okay.
So, the first thing I want to do is I want to tell you about something that you basically are having the wool pulled over your eyes right now, sitting here in these chairs. What RMA has failed to tell you is that there's an attorney here, back here, from Fresno, that's been retained by Redwood Ranch to pursue a full EIR on this project because they know that the impacts that have been demonstrated, and you can look through the brief that I submitted and is on your desk, are extraordinarily substantial. So, at the same time, they went and met with Mr. Washam of RMA and others and said, "We're going to pursue through the planning commission the special use permit to try to get as many events this year as we can and hopefully by the time those expire, we'll have our EIR in place so we can keep doing more events." There is no intention whatsoever here to limit to 12 events per year what's going on at Redwood Ranch. That is a total, total facade. They have every intention of-
Is that a fact or an opinion?
It is a fact, it is a fact, the documents-
Where are your facts?
The documents are in, the documents that were sent to you, the 500 pages by RMA and if you would like, after you give me a few minutes, I will pull out the specific pages out of there and get them to you. So, those are facts. The fact is that the attorney that's here met with Mr. Washam and followed up with a letter on his letterhead stating that this is, they had every intention of pursuing the full amount of, of, I forget the term they used, the full amount that they can in terms of getting events for this particular ranch.
What is the full amount defined as?
Whatever they can get under the EIR. They wanted 30, so they filed, Mr. Chairman, they filed an original special use permit which is contained at tab one. This is in the planning application of the documents that I provided in the big stack here. You need to read through that because what they put in there is nothing like what they're actually doing at the ranch and what they have done. For example, in the-
But doesn't the use permit, it limits it to 12, so they can't have more than 12?
Wrong, the, what is contained-
The use permit says you can have no more than 12.
Except that the, there's a paragraph in that special use permit that wasn't talked about by Ms. Hill, which says specifically that RMA has the authority to review and grant a variance allowing them more.
So they have to come back to the planning commission?
They have to come back to the planning commission. But if they get, they pursue their EIR, they're going to come back here.
But it doesn't mean we'll approve it, it doesn't mean-
I understand, but that's the full intention here. They have no intention of limiting this to 12.
Now you're conjecturing that that's going to happen. That's not kosher, okay?
Mr. Chairman, they wrote it in a letter, I will provide you the letter.
Mr. Whitlatch just told you 12 is the maximum.
Well, 12 is the maximum under this.
12 is the maximum for the CUP.
Okay, so, some of the other issues that I want to address are, if you look through the, for example, March 22nd, 2019, letter that the Georges sent to RMA, they talk about amplification at events is restricted to one microphone for announcing only and must be turned off after 10:00. If you go to exhibit 26 here, a wedding which followed not two months later at Redwood Ranch, you will see the partying and the documentation of the live bands, the DJs, the electronic music all night, and there are more. I have throughout this brief, pictures and evidence and documents, not mine, I didn't take these. These are their own customers, their own statements from their advertising material from Redwood Ranch. They tell RMA they're going to do one thing, or they say they're going to do one thing and they do another, it's-
But the CUP says you can't do that anymore. If we adopt it, they can't, if they do, there's big fines.
They've been doing it all year.
But we don't have a conditional use permit yet.
No, they did it without the conditional use permit even though they weren't supposed to.
Well, I know, but we're talking about a new set of rules that must be obeyed or else.
Okay, well, I don't, my personal opinion and behalf of my clients and everybody that sit out here and listen to all this, they come in and they tell you, "Oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that" and the reality is they do something differently. Because it's extraordinarily difficult to enforce, that's part of the problem with having these, this ranch operation and this big operation up the hill. You call the sheriff's office and it's two hours before they get up there and by that time sheriff shows up and in their report they say they just turned off the music, so nothing I can do.
But it's not the sheriff's department, they're verifying it, it's our staff that enforces it.
RMA has-
Code compliance.
There have been 50 complaints to RMA and RMA has magically said, "Nothing is substantiated."
That's in the past.
All these people that-
It's in the past, we're not going to allow that to happen.
RMA is not going to enforce it. They haven't enforced it, what-
I'll have to respond to that.
What mechanism are we going to have that is going to suddenly have RMA enforcing what they have failed to enforce for three years?
We have a law.
We could build that into the conditional use permit.
So, one other point I want to talk about real quick here is that if you look through their special use permit, there's not one mention of what they're operating as a guest ranch. So this whole thing of putting this under the umbrella of a guest ranch, it doesn't fit at all. They don't even, they'll tell you straight up, you look through that, all this is is straight, pure commercial venture for weddings and parties. That's all this is. And that is not appropriate for this area, it's not appropriate for the zoning, it's not appropriate for the residential and agricultural character of the neighborhood. So, it's wonderful that Mr. George comes up here and tells you how much he loves it and how great it was, but the reality is that when they come into town and they bring their parties and they bring all these people from wherever, Tulare County or otherwise, they're destroying for everyone else while they're here, what they love. And if you don't believe me, look through this, look through the parties, look through the Cali Rally redneck keg party that was on a weekday. This isn't something that was shut off at 10 o'clock, these parties are all going on till 2:00 in the morning.
This is what our planning commission's doing, is get some rules to go by and then I'll ask our staff to address whether or not they think they can afford it. I think they can, but these are rules, they must follow them. It's just like the speed limit, if you go 100 miles an hour, you're going to get a ticket. They're going to get a ticket and they'll get a fine. If they don't stop, then the fines are substantial.
Well, then these rules should be inconsistent with not 10 o'clock at night on the weekends, they should be earlier than that, they should be very restrictive.
We can do that.
If you're going to, if you're going to approve any type of a permit, you need to have very strict limitations on number of guests.
I think we know that.
Hours, all this.
We'll do it, we know all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public at this time? I'll give the applicant one more comment here before I close testimony.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Let me start off with an apology to the Hecker children. They were terrific, great advocates, and I feel badly because, I feel badly because that never should have happened and it won't happen and it hasn't happened recently because we have changed and we do not allow any amplified music after a certain time and when it is amplified, it's capped at 60 decibels. Now, why didn't that happen earlier? The answer is this, we had not had a single complaint about anything happening at Redwood Ranch for four years. It was only in connection with the SUP application that people came out and unfortunately, with one exception, and I do very much appreciate them, the neighbors down river, the Hackers, nobody picked up the phone, knocked on my door, wrote me a letter. It was only as a result of having to file a Public Records Act request that I was able to see some of the objections. And what did we do? Every single objection that we found, that was made even remotely in good faith, we've dealt with. So for example, concern about traffic, here's what we did. We made sure that for every event, there's a shuttle service that takes people from a designated, pre-approved area and then brings them up. Sound, when I heard that the Hackers themselves, again, I can't speak highly enough about them, I really appreciate having them as a neighbor and I know it must be tough for them to come up, they said themselves they'd never heard any noise. When their son, Daniel, also an exemplary person in my humble opinion, said he had heard something, that was one event too much for us, we made the decision to stop. So, what I want to emphasize is that in any instance where there's been any complaint, we really have tried to address it. There was just a, an exchange and Commissioner Whitlock, I hope I'm pronouncing your name-
Whitlatch, Whitten like a door latch.
Whitlatch, got it, thank you and my apologies. You said, "I'm not going to allow that to happen with respect to violating rules." Neither am I. I'm pledging my integrity on this, we are going to self-police. There is not going to be a violation and if there is, you're going to have a major apology from me because it is totally unintentional. I care about my reputation, I care about the reputation of the ranch and this is supposed to be a win-win and I hate standing here seeing some of the community members opposed to it, that really is bothersome. This is not going to be anything where anybody is unreasonable and I want to emphasize that a lot and I have to close with this.
Does your ranch have a, it's gated, is that correct?
It is gated.
You can't just walk onto the property?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
You are correct, it's a gated ranch, nobody can just walk on.
So, out of the members of the public, how many here that are here speaking for or against, how many have ever been on the ranch property itself to see it?
On before the end.
Okay, so you've actually been up there, okay. So, Mr. George, there may be something you ought to consider down the line, and I'm just interjecting here, is to have an open house or a local residence event occasionally as a goodwill gesture.
Great idea.
Show everyone what's going on there. And if, you know, if you're doing something that's a little out of order, I'm sure you'll hear about it, but the idea here is some public relations and get people in the community to go up and see what you're doing there. It's easy to sit here and take shots at something, but if you're, unless you just go up there and see it, that would be very helpful in my eyes, so that's just my two cents, okay?
I agree, I'm committing that we will do that. I do want to note, the RMA had invited a community meeting and it was rejected by the opponents, but moving forward, I hope that changes. We will have an absolutely open door, I will literally in response to what you've said, I will put out an invitation so anybody can come. I'm sorry?
It ought to be a fair compromise to come up and see what you're doing.
I think that's right.
In my eyes.
I think that's right. I want to emphasize too that I heard the attorney come up and tell me what apparently I'm thinking. I don't know where that comes from. That is a total falsehood and a total misrepresentation.
Well, I made the comment already, so we're going to go beyond that, that was pure conjecture on his part.
Pure speculation. I want to close by simply saying that, two, with respect to the claims about fire concern, it wasn't required, as soon as we heard that there was a concern about it, we forbade any fire pit, which happens to be in a big gravel parking lot area, and provided that only during the rain season and with the okay and personal participation there of our caretaker, could that ever happen. Another example of trying to go above and beyond, last point I'd like to respond to is the woman who came and addressed the issue of the Cuyahoga brodia, the plant, the flower. I would love to see one someday, I don't believe I ever have seen one, but the point about campers, again, she is mistaken, camping is only permitted on our gravel parking lot. So-
That's okay, keep going, keep going.
Thank you. So, let me just say that I hope what I've impressed upon the commission is that I've come here with total sincerity, reasonableness, this is a good thing, it's good for the community, it's good to share as far as doing a better job of so-called PR. I'm not quite sure what I could have done before, but moving forward, we will and I very much appreciate the commission's time. And the only other thing I would like to do is, I think, a 30-second video because you have not had a chance to see the location of the ranch and I just want to explain, it's taken across river and looking back at the ranch area. And the reason I wanted to show this is so you can see how large the property is and how it is so very much at a distance from the neighbors, by the way, the two neighbors upriver, no objection, they're not here. And the one to the south, you won't see here, so if we can have that played briefly.
You're going to show a video, you said?
Well, it's a 30-second video clip.
Counsel, are we okay with that? Okay.
Not quite as good as being there, but poor substitute, at least you have some sense of it.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
I've got one more question. I recently put on an event and we served wine there, we had to get a one-day permit from ABC. What's the, is a permit required to serve alcohol with a special use permit?
Yes.
It is? And so the Redwood Ranch has the permit or do you have the vendors?
We have vendors.
And so the vendors are required to have a permit in order to-
Yes.
Serve alcohol at your event?
Absolutely.
And if the pizza guy comes, does he serve alcohol?
I do not believe so.
Okay, so someone serving alcohol at that time, is there a permit for that?
Well, if it's a vendor, he has a permit.
No, he doesn't.
Who's he?
The fired-up pizza doesn't.
I can respond to that.
Excuse me, state your name and address.
My name is Andrew George, I'm Eric's brother and every bartender that serves alcohol at the ranch has to be licensed and bonded by the state of California.
But you have to have a day use permit. I had to get one, cost 50 bucks, I had to apply through the local ABC. Do you have to have one to put on an event?
My understanding is no, but my understanding is also that the bartenders do acquire those permits.
Let me answer this way, Commissioner Elliott. We will find out immediately and whatever the answer is, we will be in full compliance with it.
Because I really think that the way the law is set up is that you have to have a permit for a day event, even if it's a wedding, you have to have a permit that day. And most of the venues that don't carry them, they have the person that's booking the wedding apply for the permit.
Again, I'm personally committing, I will find the answer to that, we will be in full compliance.
Do you have a condition?
We have a condition, yes.
It's a condition.
It's a condition, okay.
It has to have a permit.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
I have a few questions.
Of course, yes, I'm sorry.
Because we heard about a caretaker and there's a caretaker housing on the property. What is the role of the caretaker during, sorry, my phone is now on. Yeah, thanks. What is the role of the caretaker during these events and, I mean, what do they do while these events are going on?
Sure, so during the events, he is personally there, he wants to make sure that there's no, by the way, glad the question was asked, no candles are permitted anywhere, that there is no fire, again, subject to what I said about rainy season and looking out to make sure that there's general order, there's not been a problem with that. And might I add, he's somebody who's a landscaper and who's done a heck of a job making sure that for his time where there's not an event, that there is no fire danger with respect to grasses and other brush and things like that that could pose a danger.
All right, and so we kind of talked about alcohol, I mean, I notice a lot of these pictures have alcohol and cannabis-influenced treats, if you want to call it that, I don't know what else to call them. So, that's a concern for me, the type of events, because then people get maybe less cautious. But since you talked about wanting to be a good neighbor, I'm going to pose a, you know, I don't want to say rhetorical question, but ask you for your, to recommend a limit on yourself in this topic. Because we heard some of the neighbors, you know, especially the kids and others, talk about decibels and not being able to hear the frogs and the birds and whatever else. What, in your opinion, would be a fair time limitation and a fair decibel slash- What, in your opinion, would be a fair time limitation and a fair decibel-noise limitation that would accommodate them being able to hear their frogs and you being able to have your music?
Great question, and what I understand is that currently we're abiding by 60 decibels. What I think would make a lot of sense is to put on music at 60 decibels and to literally speak with our neighbors to hear if that can even be heard at all, so that we know that there is no noise pollution at all, because I don't want that, and there's no reason why that has to occur.
Because a valley might amplify that.
Yes, but again, speaking with Mr. and Mrs. Hacker, they had not heard any noise from it, so I think it's a difference in where you are on that property, but I think there's a way that we can reasonably communicate and figure this out. I have no doubt we'd be able to do that.
Aaron, you can get a sound check person to come do that.
Through the chair. You could do it on your own phone with an app, but that's what the Lions Club does, and if the applicant's amenable to go down to 60 decibels from the 65 decibels, then I think we'll add that as a condition.
And what time limitation?
The amplified sound should not be permitted between the hours of 11:00 PM and 10:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays, and between 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM on Thursday and Sundays. So that's what the condition reads right now.
And the other days, no sound?
And the other days, no sound, as far as amplified sound.
Can you be acceptable to backing down that 11:00 PM a little bit?
Let me, look, as you know, Commissioner, I want to be reasonable on anything, and if that's a problem, and I think what I should do is, I think that's a great area for sort of a meet and confer and a discussion with the neighbors, and I promise that there will be that. There's already been the one meeting that we had last Easter, and I'd like to continue doing that, so I can only say that I do not want there to be any noise at any time that would disturb the children.
Mr. George, one question, just for some clarity here. We've been talking about 12 events maximum.
Yes.
Weekend events, right?
Yes.
With a maximum of 250 attendees to each one?
I don't think we've ever had 200 or more.
Okay. Then I also heard something about short-term rentals. Do you have that going on there, too?
We do.
Now, is that every day, year-round?
It's open to folks, and we've rented out the property a great deal to families, for example, or reunion that would take place in the barn, and I have to get a little help here on how many people that's limited to.
That's good, because that's my next question.
Say your name again, sir.
Hi, Andrew George. And what was the exact question?
Well, we talked about short-term rentals and numbers of people allowed, and if it's just not on weekends, like the events, then it's throughout the week and throughout the year. Is that correct?
That is correct, and the majority of our rentals are short-term, and I would say on average, it's anywhere between 14 and 18 people, and we allow up to 20 inside the barn.
So 20 is the number, basically. Now, I heard some outside camping and some other units out there. Is there other rental space?
I got, so the only construction that we've had since purchasing the ranch was to put up three very small cabins. I made a representation to the county at that time in exchange for the permit, that we would never have those rented out. They never have been, and they never will be rented out. As far as camping, that's happened, as I understand it, about 10 to 15 times this past year. At this point, it is restricted to the gravel driveway, gravel sort of parking area that's just adjacent to the barn.
Well, in all these discussions and with all these numbers of people here, nobody said anything about septic tanks or disposal, waste disposal, whether you're bringing in portable toilets or anything?
They did say portable toilets.
Is that what it was? Did I miss that part?
The chair, it's 50, one toilet per 50 people, portable toilets.
Okay.
And I'd add, Commissioner Diaz, there's also a testimonial. We don't want to inundate commissioners with it, but from a woman who is with that particular company that has porta-potties, talking about her experience, and it's all been very, according to Hoyle, with her. So we always have that present, and it's been workable so that we're not putting any undue stress on any septic.
There is a septic system out there, is there not?
Yes.
For residences?
That's correct.
Does that barn go into the septic system?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's going to, there could be many people in that barn, is that what?
Yeah, it could be up to 20, that's right.
Do you know the size of that tank on that, on that system?
I don't, sir.
Hi, Andrew George again. I believe it's 1,500 gallons.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, just to comment on Commissioner Diaz's comment, I think what we built into the short-term rental agreement the last time, which is not that long ago, is that, you know, and I think I made the comment, asking people to be aware that if you blow the system, that's when you have big fines and big problems and cleanup issues and so on. So something to certainly be aware of.
And something to be avoided, agreed.
Yeah, if you have 250 people going into the barn to use one toilet or two, you know, that might be an issue.
I would agree.
So maybe caretaker keeps them out?
Send them to the porta-potty.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, let's move on here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up with a couple things.
We're going to close the public testimony at this time.
Through the chair.
Can we get one more counsel?
Can a counsel advise us to hear the comments?
Can we do that?
Yes, you can. Through the chair, you can. You can do that.
Two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One of the issues that was brought up is this camping, and that's a really big deal, because if you look at Exhibit 26 here in the packet that I provided, you see a lot of pictures about not only the partying and the 10-foot-high speakers that are out there, but you'll also see the camping, which is not in the gravel, as Mr. George has indicated, but rather is out in amongst the trees and meadows, and you see all kinds of people out there with not only their camp, they're pitching their tents, they've got ice chests, they've got food. There's no thought whatsoever to, as you would in Sequoia National Park, with dealing with animals, dealing with making sure that food is protected. You see ice chests, you see camp, you see a couple of camps, you see a couple of tents just pitched out there in the wilderness in the trees. That's not in the gravel parking lot, folks. They're just pitched wherever, and when you have 80 people, or as they have said in their own documents, over 200 people camping on this property on multiple occasions, they camp wherever they want to camp. That's been the rules. You have the whole 190 acres. That's what their documents state. It's their own marketing materials. But the real issue is that when somebody is camped across the river or wherever they're at, they're not going to come back over to the porta-potties to use the bathroom. It's, you know, they get up in the middle of the night, and they've been drinking and partying all night, doing all this stuff. You think they're going to, they're going to come back across the river or go back way over where?
That's conjecture, that's conjecture again.
Okay, that's why we have to have a designated camp area. We have to have a number of campers put in this that's specific, and we also need, just like we did on the Lions Arena, RMA sent people out there during the events to monitor the activity of the events. We have to have an agreement from both sides.
There has to be a way for somebody to go out and monitor these events, because these events have been, are diametrically different than what has been represented by the Georgias.
As Commissioner Whitlatch pointed out to you, this is going to be a conditional use permit. It's approved by the commission if it is, and it has code enforcement consequences by staff, RMA, Resource Management. So I'm just going to tell you that we're going to go by the law here. We're going to go by what he's been told he can do and what he can't do.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman.
All that other thing, all that stuff behind us is behind us. We're going to go forward from here if we approve, and that's the way it's going to work.
Well, then I would urge you to have a mechanism that can be observed and enforced, because as it is now, it's private property. Folks can't just wander on there to see if they're camping wherever they want to, or they're partying late at night other than what they, you know, they hear down at their homes. So very, very, very strong enforcement teeth and observation abilities for.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Any other persons, members of the public who would like to speak at this time? If not, I'm going to close the public testimony.
I'd like to speak.
I will reopen the public testimony.
My name is Mathias Harrigus. I live at 46136 South Fork Drive, about a mile and a half down from the project site. It's great that Eric George has been here to paint a picture, but he doesn't live here. He doesn't live in Tulare County. He doesn't live on the Upper South Fork, and we have been dealing with this issue for three years. One of the major reasons why we haven't brought this up before is because we assume that Tulare County permitted this use. We have heard music over 30 different weekends this year. It's kept my wife and my family up until 2:00 in the morning, and people may not hear it a half mile down, but we can still hear it a mile and a half down, because the way the canyon is positioned, echo bounces off different places in the canyon. Another issue I'd like to address is that within the planning agenda, it lists that Tulare, the Tulare County Fire Department has approved the means and the access to this property, and it has not. That document is not found anywhere within the 584, or 500, whatever pages it is. It was approved for structural fires and to muster and appoint designated in front of the barn. These are issues as far as residents of the South Fork Canyon that we need addressed before a vote can be made on this proposal. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'm going to close the public testimony, and we will look for a summarization, comments from fellow commissioners.
Just for the record, I am Eric Bach. I'm the Assistant Director for the Resource Management Agency. I'd like to address, first of all, the sequel question. We are the lead agency. This is an existing facility. I think all these matters will be addressed, and I would suggest at this time, just make sure there is no question in the future about whether camping is allowed. The owner themselves said it'll be only on the gravel parking area, so that will be a condition to this project, and the numbers are already limited as far as overnight guests to 100, so that would stay consistent, so there will be no question about that. So that should address the sequel question that was raised, as far as people wandering around the site. The other question was in regards to whether there was going to be a variance or not. It does address that in the agenda and in the staff report, and as April stated, we have withdrawn the variance application to this project. So any project moving forwards for that variance is going to have to resubmit for an application and go through this entire process again, so it's not part and parcel of this project. We are not segmenting. We are not phasing. That is a separate project. Also do address the sequel question. In regards to the FGMP, I don't know how many people want to question an agency on its interpretation of its own general plan, as far as we are the experts in regards to our general plan. We have Dave Bryan out here himself to attest to that. As far as the FGMP, as it was constructed and written, it allowed the AF zone to have additional uses, use permits, and as I say time and time and time again, use permits are to basically reduce the potential for nuisances, but they are in allowed use. In other words, it brings it back to being compliant with the zoning within that zone itself, and the forefathers of this great Tulare County deemed it an allowed use despite all these general plan measures that are for development corridors, and Mr. Bryan can also attest to this, having worked on such projects as Yocul Ranch, what development corridors were for and what they were for not. And development corridors, like we experienced on other projects, got PDFM zone on them, so they were built for residential development, or I should say that were constructed for residential development and commercial development. These uses we're talking about are not considered those retail commercial uses, are not considered those type of residential subdivisions. These are outside of those development corridors, and all the tests, all the development standards are intended for those development quarters as they were making those development quarters, not necessarily, if a new project like Yocul Ranch rolled through here, it had to have a master development plan, again, a specific plan. This is not that type of use. This is a conditional use permit. So in this case, instead of using our legislative authority, like we might use with an MDP or something like that, we are using our quasi-judicial authority to look at conditions for a use permit. So I don't want to confuse the terms, "commercial uses," because what the FGMP was talking to was retail, commercial, not assemblages of persons. Last point I wanted to make in regards to assemblages of persons, this ordinance was passed specifically, assemblages was passed to be applied to agricultural zones. I mean, this commission has heard its fair share of party barns. We have these every day, and this is how we deal with every party barn in the county. This is nothing, nothing new. That being said, this is an opportunity for the applicant to address a lot of the concerns that they heard today, which have not been addressed before, and as stated by many people, they didn't necessarily complain before because they thought it already had a use permit. Well, now it's coming into compliance, and Mr. Whitlatch stated before there was no use permit on this project. As in all things, there is real, not a noise ordinance, no way really to police noise outside of the use permit process, and this gives us the availability. We can do this now, and like the Lions Club, I would agree that we add another condition, and like we have recently, that we do quarterly monitoring, and that, God help me, that we actually go out to one of these events and make sure that they are complying with all the conditions, because we did that for the Lions Club. Thank you, Ms. Dana Metlin, for doing that that one time. We'll do it the same here, and we'll go out there, and we'll monitor it for noise and everything else.
Okay, so when are we going to do that?
I'd say we'll do the first event coming up.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it?
And there was a comment out there, should it be unannounced. You know, the Lions Club itself was announced. The good thing is the neighbors were definitely aware of everything, so when we got phone calls, we were able to immediately go right back out there and check on the sound. The other thing would be to make sure that the caretaker has a sound device on them at all times, so they can monitor the sound at the boundary of the project, and that they can keep it down below the now 60 decibels at the property line.
Is that already a condition?
65 is a condition of all of our assemblages of persons, so this is, the applicant's agreed to 60, from what I heard.
I mean, the decibel monitoring by the caretaker.
Oh, no, that's new. I mean, that's not an absolute requirement, but we did do that for the Lions Club, and we can do that for this as well.
And we have, in our conditions, we have a cap of 100 persons.
Yes, 20 in the short-term rental barn and 80 campers, and they will all be allocated to the gravel area.
Point of clarification, Aaron, the documents said that it's something we might want to consider whether we are counting short-term rentals as assemblages as part of these 12?
Well, they're separate.
Okay.
What we consider the short-term rental, where it's a guest, that's the guest ranch, lodging for overnight stays, for cooking and dining with recreational activities in mind, including that. So they're associated, but they are two separate uses under our use permit system. See, guest ranch appears in Section 10.3, and assemblages is its own separate ordinance.
Thank you, Aaron, for that clarification.
I have a couple summary comments when it comes to that.
You have a comment?
Yeah, okay. So just a couple things to point out to the Georgias and to everybody if it's not already, if you haven't read every single page of these documents, it might be a good idea to do that. So you've already agreed to the 60 decibels, and as Aaron said, you know, one of the recommendations would be to have the caretaker do decibel monitoring, because, you know, weddings and parties and et cetera can very quickly get very loud. You're required, and your guests are required, to have bear-proof solid waste containers. You're required, and your guests are required, to have bear-proof solid waste containers, so not food laying around. Something to consider around that, you know, for your own sakes, if this were approved and your guests go ahead with food all over the place, you guys then become personally liable or whatever, however legally you have this thing organized, if somebody gets mauled by a bear, you know, for example. So RMA is going to do monitoring. I would suggest, because, you know, people tend to get anxious when they don't know who to contact and where to direct questions and information and so on, maybe consider talking to your neighbors and providing a contact point. That's up to you guys to define how, but, you know, in the absence of proper dialogue and information, people tend to get upset. And the, I wanted to, I guess, follow up with, you know, I'm big on fire departments, Aaron. So for each event, does the fire department approve, or do they approve evacuation plans and routes and things like that in general for?
I know there's a fire inspection in general for each event. The condition here that they have a fire department basically approved plan, so that's not done quite yet, but regardless, that is a condition of the project per this planning commission. And through the hearings, we did establish some proposed measures in the ordinance in regards to fires, and we made sure those are in here. Even though that's not approved yet, that's, we still made those conditions, which is within our police powers to do so.
The way I understand this, we still have the eleven o'clock in there. I can't support this at eleven o'clock. We gotta, we need to iron that out before we have this permit.
Make the motion.
To the chair, I think there, if you could open the public hearing for a second, I think there might be an opportunity here.
At this time, I will open the public hearing to the applicant.
Thank you very much. If ten-thirty makes a difference, I think that makes sense, but I also want to add that I will be having that communication with our neighbors to make sure that that's satisfactory. I also want to respond specifically, say that on my to-do list, I'm committing, I want the record to be clear, the caretaker will have a decibel monitor to be able to routinely regulate and make sure that that's in fact being enforced. And I think it's a terrific idea about having a contact point, and that'll be the caretaker, and we'll disseminate that information as well.
Well, maybe also, if it does help the commission, the other thing is that Lions Club does, is does tell the surrounding persons and puts on the website the events themselves so that they're aware of the time of those events. So that if there is a noise that's outside of those times of the events, that they call us immediately. So that would be the other opportunity for this planning commission to add a commission, a condition regarding.
To publish to the neighbors, kind of like the three hundred feet or notice the neighbors?
Yeah, the notice, the three hundred feet, but also to publish it to their website and provide it to the county.
So then if something were outside of that published schedule, we'd know it was illegal?
That would be correct.
Okay.
And again, we'll stipulate to that. I had in mind that that would be a good idea, something like that to do for our neighbors, but there's no reason why it can't be accessed by anybody.
Do you have a website?
We do have a website.
In the middle fork, we have the Drum Circle every Sunday night, ten o'clock. We have the Lions Events, Roping, ten o'clock. We gotta go ten o'clock, and we need to keep that consistent.
Well, that's downtown Three Rivers, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's the same kind of canyon. It bounces off the walls. And I, I mean, I, ten o'clock seems reasonable for everybody else.
I can support that, John, so if you want to make that a condition, yeah?
I want that as a condition. I don't want my kids up after ten o'clock either.
Then it's ten PM.
Okay, I can go for that.
Thank you.
We have a lot of additional conditions. How do we word all that?
Well, we'll go to close the public hearing and then. We have to close the public hearing and make the motion.
Yeah, and April has documented each one of those conditions, and again, we'll use the Three Rivers, Lions Club, Roping Arena conditions as reference.
So, Mr. George, are you finished?
I am, unless there are any further questions.
All right, well, then we'll close the public testimony at this time. Thank you very much for your input. All right, we're going to move on here. We're going to take a look at making a motion with conditions added to the applicant's conditional exemption plus the conditional CUP approval. So, April, would you like to reiterate what we've said to add on to what we're going to vote on?
Ten PM discontinuing of music or amplification.
Number one.
Publish the events through the website.
Number two.
And to neighbors.
And the neighbors.
And the neighbors.
Yes.
And to staff.
And county staff.
And also the onsite monitoring by RMA.
I have a few more conditions, too. Fire department approved evacuation plan.
Number three.
The caretaker having a noise monitor, a decibel meter.
Number four.
Camping only on the gravel area.
Number five.
We'll get that specific site plan. That's it.
Did you mention quarterly monitoring?
Quarterly monitoring, and we will monitor the first event this year.
Number six.
And the levels not to exceed sixty decibels at the property line.
Number seven.
I'll make that the property line on the north by the road.
Correct.
Is that it?
That's it, sir.
All right.
I think Mr. Washam.
There was just one more that I think I recall hearing was having a contact point.
Yeah, I was going to say.
The caretaker, if that's acceptable to be the contact that neighbors can contact during.
Well, that's number eight.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Washam. So with that being said, we have eight additional conditions added on. May I have someone propose a motion to approve with those conditions, those eight conditions?
Could I, could I ask one question?
No.
No, you cannot.
May I have a motion to approve? Yes?
Come on, Maria, give it a chance.
After you.
That's the old guy up here.
Were you still thinking about this?
I'll make that motion.
I would like a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr.
I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 Code, California Code of Regulations, Section 15301, Class 1, pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 19-019 with the added conditions as presented by staff.
Eight, or were there eight additional conditions? I believe that was what it was. May I have a second, please?
A little second.
Please vote. The applicant, the special use permit PSP 19-019 is approved, six yes, one no. Thank you very much. Motion passes. We'll take a break. John's out there hitching his gavel. Planning Commission is now back in session for December 11th, 2019, and we're moving on to item 5E. And I'm going to just very quickly read the, it's an amendment to the General Plan GPA 17-007 for the 2019 Lemon Cove Community Plan Zoning Ordinance Amendments, PZC 19-016, PZC 19-017, and PZZ 17-007. And Tulare County Resource Management Agency, Mr. Dave Bryant. Good morning, sir. Can you talk fast?
Yes, thank you Chairman Millie, members of the commission, Dave Bryant, Chief Planner, Special Projects, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Before I begin my presentation today, I would just like to briefly acknowledge and thank the Lemon Cove Sanitary District and their Board of Directors for accommodating us at their meetings and providing valuable insight and feedback into their community and interacting with us during the preparation of the draft document. And also to the Sequoia Union School Superintendent and School Board for accommodating us in our public outreach efforts. And then finally, recognizing Susan Simon and Jessica Willis of our staff for actually preparing the planning and environmental documents that are associated with this project. Presented for your consideration this afternoon is the Lemon Cove Community Plan, the request for approval and recommendation of the Board of Supervisors for General Plan Amendment 17007, which includes initial study, mitigated negative declaration, monitoring and reporting program, general plan amendment, again, GPA 17007. As part of the, as I previously mentioned, as part of the process, we've conducted approximately seven public outreach meetings, both at Sequoia Union School and also in conjunction with the Lemon Cove Sanitary District. As part of the Lemon Cove Community Plan update, it also includes an amendment to Section 18.9 to allow for mixed-use overlays, presented, recommended as part of Zone Change 19-016, an amendment of Section 16 in the zoning ordinance to allow additional byright uses, PZC 19-017. And then finally, in order to implement the Community Plan Amendment to zoning districts, which is the zoning plan, and is recommended as part of PZZ 17-007. Lemon Cove is located essentially along Highway 198, south of Lake Kaweah and east of Visalia and Woodlake. As part of the SEQA analysis that's provided, again, initial study, mitigated negative declaration is recommended with a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. No significant impacts were identified, less than significant impacts with mitigation regarding biological, cultural, tribal-cultural resources. And the mandatory findings of significance indicated that any of these potential impacts would be reduced by pre-construction surveys to less than significant technical memoranda for air quality, energy, and greenhouse gas, as well as response to comments. For the Lemon Cove Community Plan, staff request is for your commission to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to certify and adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Lemon Cove Community Plan associated with GPA 17-007. The existing Lemon Cove urban development boundary is, includes the Lemon Cove Sanitary District, which is highlighted in your, in your, within the blue urban development boundary and is highlighted in red. The primary sanitary district boundaries located near the center of the Central Business District, the wastewater treatment facility is located to the, to the northwest. Currently, as part of the General Plan 2030 update, the adopted land use is mixed use as provided for and adopted by the Tulare County Board of Supervisors in 2012. The existing UDB includes approximately 400 acres. It's recommended to be increased by approximately 270 acres for a total of 673 acres. The UDB is squared off utilizing zoning and parcel lines. The existing population of the community is 232, median household income 51,000, approximately 115 housing units, eighty-four of the, eighty-four percent of those are one-unit, single-family detached residences. Eighty-three percent of those housing units are owner-occupied. Water and sewer is provided by the Lemon Cove Sanitary District, as previously mentioned, within their district boundaries. The existing and proposed zoning districts are provided here in the, in the attached exhibits. A substantial majority within the urban development boundary is currently zoned A1, consistent with existing agricultural parcels and provides for a holding zone with five-acre minimum parcel size requirements in order to preserve land at some point for consideration for future urban uses. The Central Business District, primarily rural residential, some commercial, some high-density residential. The portion to the south is primarily rural residential and includes the Sequoia Union School and the Memorial District. The proposed zoning districts, which will be detailed in a subsequent slide, are looking at several different opportunities to promote mixed-use zoning along the Highway 198, to provide for rural residential development, RA zoning in and around the Sequoia Union School, to change the zoning on the school to professional office to potentially accommodate a future healthcare clinic. Lastly, the Lemon Cove RV Park to the south of the community to redesignate that as per staff recommendations for commercial recreation.
David, you said that water and sewer is provided to what, the commercial district? They don't have a sewer treatment plant.
Yes, there's a wastewater treatment plant that's all, that I mentioned, that's up in this area here, that serves the community. There are approximately 50 connections for both water and sewer. Again, the primary service area is here in the Central Business District. It's fairly limited at this time, and again, provides approximately 50 connections. Just to very briefly highlight, the areas on this exhibit that are colored are the zoning changes that are currently recommended by staff, briefly to cover those. Again, one of the primary objectives in order to provide economic development opportunities and to provide reinvestment back into the communities, create jobs-housing balance, and to promote infill within the community. Looking here at the north, there are some existing commercial and one light industrial parcel. Looking, looking at those opportunities for mixed-use development. Looking, looking at those opportunities for mixed use development. Also, within the existing Central Business District, there are existing C2 designated parcels in this area here that are recommended for mixed use zoning. There are two property owner requests, excuse me, three property owner requests for changes to R3 mixed use and to RA zoning, again, within the Central Business District. The fire station, which is included right here for C2 mixed use, another C2 mixed use for a property south of the fire station. And again, in regards to the Sequoia Union School here, professional office mixed use and rural residential development supporting safe routes to schools and close proximity to schools for residential development in and around the school. And then lastly, with the Lemon Cove RV Park to recommend commercial recreation. One technical change that I'd like to recommend is the map that's included here in the PowerPoint. There is one change based on late comments for the light industrial parcel located to the north part of the community. That was initially recommended for mixed use based on recommendations and comments from the community. That is recommended as just M1 scenic corridor. And so that I think is reflected in the next zoning maps that we have. Lastly, in regards to zoning changes, staff had initially recommended C2 mixed use for the Central Business District area based on recommendations from the community to maintain a residential character of the community. Staff is now recommending, again, limited C2 mixed use commercial. That's limited to just the existing C2 zoning districts that currently exist within that area and then along with two property owner requests for R3 mixed use. In regards to transportation and circulation plan, Highway one ninety-eight is designated, proposed as a major arterial. State Highway two sixteen is a minor arterial and then Avenue three twenty-four is a minor Complete streets are proposed as part of the plan within the urban development boundary. Phase one to connect the rural residential properties along Avenue three twenty-four connecting to the Memorial District and also to the Sequoia Union School as part of phase one. And then phase two would be to look at connecting the Central Business District to the north to Avenue three twenty-four. As I had indicated, mixed use overlay zoning is, is recommended, again, to provide for reinvestment in the community, to provide for economic development, to provide for jobs, housing balance, and to provide for infill development where appropriate. Section sixteen by right zoning is additional by right uses is also recommended with no or minimal environmental or land use impact on adjacent uses are allowed. Those uses that have an environmental or adverse land use effect on adjacent properties may necessitate mitigation measures that are required as part of the traditional use permit process. It is recommended by staff for your commission to recommend to the Board of Supervisors certification and adoption of the initial study mitigated negative declaration under the California Environmental Quality Act and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the 2019 Lemon Cove Community Plan. Adoption of General Plan Amendment GPA seventeen dash zero zero seven for the 2019 Lemon Cove Community Plan. Amendments to section eighteen point nine of Ordinance Code three fifty-two, the zoning ordinance to establish a mixed use combining zone, PZC nineteen dash zero one six within the Lemon Cove Urban Development Boundary. Amendment to section sixteen of the Ordinance Code of the zoning ordinance number three fifty-two to allow additional by right uses, PZC nineteen dash zero one seven within the Lemon Cove Urban Development Boundary. And finally, amendment to ordinance number three fifty-two Tulare County zoning ordinance is set forth in the zoning district ordinance maps, number PZC seventeen dash zero zero seven for Lemon Cove consistent with the 2019 Lemon Cove Community Plan to rezone certain properties within Lemon Cove. That concludes my staff presentation. I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Nope.
Questions? Excellent, David. Good job.
Yeah.
What we're going to do, pardon?
This isn't a public hearing.
Yes.
We're going to do that. This is a public here. We're going, quickly because we have to wrap up with the end of the year elections and things like that. This is a public hearing and so therefore at this time I'll open to the public testimony for comments. Are there any members of the public would like to make comments at this time? Please step forward. We have, we're somewhat limited on time, but please step forward.
I'm sorry, I can't speak.
No problem, no problem. State your name and address. Good morning. Ah, it's good afternoon now.
My name is Michael Aberisk. I live at two four four three eight Avenue three twenty-eight in Lemon Cove. I had no idea, this is Greek to me, I had no idea how professional this, this whole quorum is. So I'm totally unprepared this morning. I thought I would come to object by a raise of hand. Evidently people have prepared notes and statements, so I'm going to be extemporaneous It is my understanding, and I'm only objecting to those residential properties that are up for review on zone change. One of them happens to be next door to me, right exactly next door. As far as the environmental impact, my wife, I don't hear well, but my wife said the, the owls have left their nesting from the lights, from all the trailers on the existing property next to me. There are several airstream trailers on this property. And I, I saw earlier that speculation didn't set well with you folks, but the, the wife of the, the man next to me, on the property next to me, communicated to me that they were interested in Airbnb with the airstream trailers on their property. I'm just here to say that aside from, aside from some of their intrusive idiosyncrasies, they keep their property neat and they state it themselves. My worry is that I invested my, my entire savings and in retirement in a home in a residential area. And I, I find it aggravating that I might end up living next to a trailer park. I just want you folks to consider that when you, when you make a motion on this zoning. And, and try to picture yourself in my position. There's already, I believe the owls left because of the lights. I have nothing against my neighbor. It's nothing personal. I just, I just didn't work hard all my life to end up next to a trailer park. And with that, I'll conclude my statement. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Can you explain that a little bit there?
Yes. The, and, and I, I want to apologize during my presentation, there was correspondence, I believe that was transmitted to your commission in regards to concerns that were raised by some of the property owners, again, living in the Central Business District area in regards to the proposed R3 mixed use zoning as requested by two property owners within that area. Included within that correspondence was staff response to those concerns. The two properties in question, total point four eight acres and are located with the cursor here at the south end of the Central Business District. And then one other property that's located near the central part of the Central Business District. The, the property to the north is point one seven acres and the property to the south, I think is point three one acres. And the property owners have requested a consideration for mixed use zoning on their property, which is, as part of our Community Plan Outreach Efforts in other communities, we have offered residents with the opportunity to present recommendations to us that we could present to the commission for rezoning opportunities, which again, we have utilized in all of the thirty-plus communities that we have presented for your and the board's consideration over the past five to six years as part of Community Plan Updates. Very successfully, a number of these type of smaller parcels have accommodated professional offices for insurance companies or, in the case of Early Mart, I worked with a barber who wanted to open up a barber shop in a residential, existing residence. We would envision that based on the size of the parcels and also with the development standards that would be in place with the section eighteen point nine mixed use zoning, that any type of intrusion in regards to lighting, dust, noise, odor, those would be minimized or eliminated as part of the development standards that would be associated with any of those proposals. And in regards to the scale of development, the size of these parcels would not afford any type of large-scale development. Again, you would be looking at something similar to an adaptive reuse of an existing residential structure primarily. And the scale would be appropriate or commensurate with infill development that we've, have accommodated in other community plans.
And just to be clear on this point, we have reviewed the previous zoning with the sanitation district and with the school district. And we had greater schemes legislatively to, again, try to make as many economic development opportunities as are ours because we all know, as some of you drive by Lemon Cove every day, you know, there's no real explanation as to why, you know, things haven't really happened there, but there's boarded up buildings, et cetera. So, I mean, the, the economic development opportunities, you got to take them where they come from. So we took our own legislative type changes we wanted to do for economic development and now we're down to the people asking, requesting for, for zoning variances. So as far as the streamlined trailers, I don't think there's a real threat for that to expand. But the, the, because as Dave's stating, the, the size of the parcel is not really made for something like that. But regardless, you know, every instance we've had so far, when someone has requested a zone change, we've done it. So whether, whether it's, and we haven't had too many people fight back against any of those type of things. But again, legislatively, it's well within our authority to, to make these zone changes all on our own.
There, there is that inconsistency with the airstreams because in the short-term run, they're not covered and they, as a front of the understanding, they need a special use permit to rent an airstream on a property.
Right. So in, in this case, from what we've heard, they weren't renting them. If somebody has evidence otherwise that they're renting those airstreams, that would be news to us. So we could go in on the enforcement side to do that. So with that evidence, we could, we could do that, but as of yet, we had no evidence as to the, the rental nature of those.
Okay. May I make a statement? There has been no evidence that they have been rented out and I'm just speculating because of the communication I had with Mr. Storm's wife, that they were interested in an Airbnb. I brought with me and I represent thirty-eight other homeowners and renters in the immediate area that are opposed to this rezoning. And if, if that's Mr. Storm's intent to, to have an Airbnb, then, then I vehemently object.
You have letters there?
I, I brought a petition with me.
If you, if you want to submit that.
I sent the petition to.
You have it, David?
Yes, that was included in the transmittal that Velma sent to you, I believe, the evening before last.
Oh, okay. The page, okay.
Yes.
Got it. Are there any of the members of the public that would like to come up and speak at this time?
That's I'm Tom Storm.
Yes, over there, sir. Thank you very much. State your name and address.
Tom Storm. I live at two four four one two Avenue three two eight. I'm Mike's neighbor. We moved here from Idaho three years ago. We bought that property, which is a very unique property. That was the US Bank built that building in nineteen twenty-one on the corner. And then on the alley is a little eighteen by eighteen block building that was used for three different commercial uses that we found out over the last fifty, sixty years. It was a meat market, it was a post office or a telephone, Lemon Cove telephone, and then it was a beauty shop for a number of years. When I came, we have three airstream trailers that are a nineteen fifty-nine that we've totally rebuilt, a nineteen sixty-seven, these are our own personal trailers, and they have a two thousand and fourteen. I've set these all up on the property on concrete, everything's totally manicured. We use these for our own use only. We've had them for fifteen years. We only asked if it was possible to have an Airbnb because we had attended one in Petaluma. When the county said it's not possible, we have never pursued an Airbnb at all. We have no intention of that. When I talked to Dave, he said it would be wise for you guys to apply for the little building so if you ever wanted to have some small commercial business there, you could do it. That's why we applied. We have no intention of any, we've never sold anything out of there. My wife's an artist. We thought she might like to have a little studio there. So that's all we've done is just apply so that if down the road when I do retire, we want to have a little art studio that we'd open it once a month, we'd be legal, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that information. Are there any of the members of the public would like to speak at this time? Yes? We're closed here.
Through the chair, if I may interrupt quickly, Hector Garrett, Chief Environmental Planner. I have to leave for a super sequo seminar in San Francisco.
Do we want to, do you want to continue the testimony?
You know what, we have to be out of here at one, Velma?
Yes.
I really hate to do this. We should continue at this time and keep the public testimony open. So.
We have a time constraint, so we're going to continue the public testimony. Leave it open. If you could return for our next meeting.
What's our next meeting, Velma?
Our date, date certain.
Fifteenth.
Is January fifteenth.
If you, if you vote that way.
Twenty twenty.
Okay.
Return, then we will continue with your commentary in the public testimony.
There'll be no action on this item today?
No action right now.
No action.
We're, no, and so we're continuing the public hearing on it as well.
I think we could get through it today quite quickly, but whatever you want.
Well, but we absolutely have to be out of here.
Yeah.
We need to sit up.
And we have some other business we have to attend to.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion to continue this to?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, we continue this to January, what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
No, we have a second. So could we? So could we move, do we have a second? Could we move it?
I'll second it.
Could you vote, please?
I don't have mine.
I knew that was too much.
Yes.
I'd get two back.
Yes, everybody voted? Come on.
I need you to vote. Thank you.
I think that was added.
All right, there we go. And Mr. Whitlatch is absent, so we have a six yes, zero no. We'll move on very quickly to item six. Let's.
Going to be no action on this?
No action.
Postpone. It's postponed.
Postpone until January 15th. So be sure to come back on January 15th, nine o'clock.
Through the chair, if we can move quickly through the calendar.
Yeah, let's go through the calendar. Could I get a motion to approve the calendar for 2020?
So moved.
Second. Hold on.
Go call.
Hold on one moment.
Sounds like we need two December meetings next year.
Special meeting if we need one.
Oh, Jesus.
Okay.
Got it. We got a motion. There we go. Can we vote, please?
And who's the up for the chair? Who's up?
Well, I'm going to do that. I'm going to do that. So we have the motion passes on approval of the 2020 calendar, a six yes, zero no. We move on to election of the Planning Commission Chair for 2020. I believe it's Mr. Whitlatch. Is that correct?
I think it is.
Do we have a, do we have a?
Well, we have some new new folks that need to step up and.
Well, if you're following the sequence.
Velma, so it would be Bill Whitlatch, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the sequence.
Who would do, who's following Bill, then?
Probably me.
Who is the, well, let's follow.
That's why I'm saying there's some new people that should come in before I do.
No, we have to follow the sequence.
We can vote for the chair at this time, and then if you want to abdicate your position as vice chair for next year, you could abdicate and leave it up to the new folks.
You follow Whitlatch.
Yeah.
You want to abdicate that?
Wait, wait, let's do the.
Do the first motion first.
Bill first.
So can I have a motion to approve the chair for 2020, Mr. Bill Whitlatch?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I second.
Let's vote, please. I'll vote no.
Okay.
Six yes, zero no. Let's move on to election of the Planning Commission Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, I would, I'm due, but I'll abdicate and leave it to a new member to get the experience.
So I would move to, I'd move to elect Maria to the vice chair position. Steve, does that hurt your feelings?
No.
All right.
I've been here a year.
All right, so I'm moving for Maria as vice chair.
And then push it, push your button.
Could I have a second to that, please?
Did you?
Oh, I did. Sorry, I'll move it. Okay.
All right.
Let's vote, please.
I need to abstain since it's me?
No, you can vote for yourself. You can vote no for yourself.
I voted no. Years ago, I voted no on me, and I was outvoted.
Through the chair, the motion carries.
And that's it. And so Planning Director Updates, we're going to.
We'll reserve that till next time. Thank you.
All right.
And so we will adjourn, reconvene on January 15th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
How about lunch? Do we get lunch?
It's been a pleasure.
Catch.
You're going down to your place. Nobody's giving me. Nobody's giving me.
I think they should give us one. I don't think so. Okay. I haven't. Not yet.
No, I don't.